Director Anna Vasudev is joining us remotely.
I can hear you now.
Great. Vice President Mike Chang is excused this evening and President Khadija Brown?
I am present, thank you very much. We will now move on to the approval of the agenda, but before we do, I have something that we need to do, that we need to change. Typically, our superintendent has her comments before open public session, but we will actually move her comments to item number... We will actually move her item, her comments to item number 10 after Union comments, so that all of you all who have been waiting for a long time, especially our young people who have been waiting for a long time, get the opportunity to speak and you don't have to be here any longer than possible. And so we thank you Superintendent for your graciousness and for being okay with that move. There aren't any other corrections or additions that need to be made to the agenda tonight. So is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda? With the necessary correction?
I move.
Okay, it's been moved by Director Shinaskey, is there a second?
A second.
It's been seconded by Director Corn. Ms. Charles, can you please call the roll?
Director Shinaskey?
Yes.
Director Corn?
Yes.
Director Vasudev?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes.
Okay.
Student Director?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes and this evening's agenda is approved. We will now go to our report out from closed session. This evening for closed session, the board members that were present were President Brown, Director Corn, Director Vasudev, and Director Shinaskey, with Director Chang, Vice President Chang being excused. For item 3.1, it has been put on here as two parts, and so we will only speak to the first part of item 3.1, and we will then table the second part of item 3.1. But for the first part of item 3.1, the board heard an update and provided direct... Moved by Director Shinaskey, seconded by Director Corn, and all present board directors voted in favor. For item 3.2.1, it was moved by Director Shinaskey. Move on to the reason why most of you all are here, I'm sure, which is our public opportunity for public, our first opportunity for public comment. I have lots and lots and lots of cards up here and we're... Cards, so that everyone knows what we will do. Thank you. So that everyone knows what we will do. It is always the practice of the board to allow our students to be the first speakers, and so we can make sure that we prioritize their voices first. And so we will call on our student speakers and they will go first. After that, we will call on individual adults who will be speaking on various topics. However, if there are five or more cards that we have under the same topic, we are going to give that time, a five-minute speaking time, and we are going to ask you all to organize yourselves. You will be able to give as much speaking time to all of the individuals who want to speak on that specific topic. And so if I can be... A little bit more specific, give me one second. Thank you very much. If you can please just be careful, the lights are against the wall, I believe on this side. And so just be careful to make sure you don't turn them off again, because we all want to be able to see. You're the school that you are representing and speaking for. And what you'll do is you'll come to the dais and you'll speak. So I'm going to call one card and that's...
Hello everyone, my name is Zadie Hill and I'm in second, I'm a second grader at Thousand Oaks. And I also attend the We Rock program. We also, we want to talk about something really important to me, Mr. Dante. Because of him, we, you know, we can make a difference in my community. He can, he shows me that I matter and that I can be a leader too.
Adults have to do something, but what we will allow you to do, sorry. But what we will allow you to do is finish your sentence. As soon as you hear the boop, we're going to let you finish your sentence whenever you hear that, okay? And so, Zadie, did you need to finish the last part of your sentence or are you good? You want to finish that last part of your sentence? Okay, come on back.
It makes me really sad to hear that he might not work here with us anymore at Thousand Oaks and We Rock wouldn't be the same without him. I don't want to lose someone who really, wait, to lose someone who makes such a big difference in my life and the lives of my friends.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Elle, followed by Clara Murrell.
Hi, my name is Elle Wincin, I'm here, I'm a second grader at Thousand Oaks Elementary. I'm speaking because I want Mr. Dante to stay at Thousand Oaks. I want Mr. Dante to stay because he is the best. Seeing Mr. Dante's face every afternoon makes me feel happy. One of the things I love about Mr. Dante is all the activities he organizes like for us. Like dance, singing, and arts and crafts. He makes We Rock so much fun and I am feeling so sad. He always, he always makes me feel better. I really want Mr. Dante to stay.
Thank you very much. Next, we will hear from Clara, followed by our student speakers from Sylvia Mendez, and I'll give some instruction for that, okay?
Thank you for coming. I think Mr. Dante is such a nice person and a lot of people want him to stay. And he makes such good activities for us and we love him so, so much. And we don't want him to leave. Thank you, Mr. Dante, for being here for us and making us happy when we're sad. And you leaving is the worst nightmare and we will never leave you. Thank you for coming to our school, the best We Rock principal in the world. And I want to thank you guys for coming here tonight. It means a lot to us and have a good night. And one more thing I want to ask the school board to keep him at Thousand Oaks School.
Thank you Clara. Next, we will hear from the students at Sylvia Mendez. They were kind enough to put all eight speakers on one card. And so what we will do is we will give you the same five-minute speaking time since you all are one group. I know that you only need three minutes, but we will give you those five minutes and then with the other two minutes, we will just enjoy other student speakers. And so whenever you are ready, you may begin.
Hi, my name is Arlo and this is Olivia, Anders, Elena, Zia, Rowan, Valentina, Gracie, and Rosalyn. We want to advocate for the literacy curriculum of Fish Tank and Functional Morphology. We are fifth graders at Sylvia Mendez in teacher Erica's class and we have been trying out different new curriculums. My classmates will explain why Berkeley's Elementary School should adopt these programs.
Uh, I'm Olivia. We think you should adopt Functional Morphology. This program teaches us parts and words, like prefixes, suffixes, and roots. We can, we learn what the word parts mean. So now we can understand what the words mean. And that makes the words mean more sense. We can understand those words when we read and we can use them when we write and when we speak.
My name, my name is Anders and I teach in Functional Morphology. I think I know how to spell the word parts, so I know how to spell difficult words. Other kids have improved their spelling too. Also, many kids have become more fluent readers because they can also read difficult words more easily.
My name is Gracie and we also think that you should adopt Fish Tank as a reading and writing curriculum.
My name is Elena. In my opinion, Fish Tank is giving elementary students more knowledge about what is happening in the world. Right now, we are learning about what life is like for women and girls in Afghanistan and Pakistan. When I take in this information, it challenges my mental thinking and helps me understand more complex scenarios that I might read about.
Hi, my name is Zia. When we learn more about the world, we are preparing ourselves to help. We think about who is struggling in the world and what we can do. We read I Am Merala and from her, we learn that we can speak up for what we think is right. Learning about the world will also help us when we're older.
It's really interesting in the topics that we're learning about. We really enjoy the books in Fish Tank, so we're focused and more, and more interested to put, and we want to participate more.
Good evening, my name is Valentina. We write about human rights and it's interesting and important. This program helps us plan our writing and express our ideas clearly. We write pretty much every day to help us process what we're learning. And then we do some bigger writing projects after we've learned a lot. Also, because of morphology, when I write, my spelling is better and I use better vocabulary. Thank you.
My name is Rosalyn. My name is Rosalyn. My name is Rosalyn. And in conclusion, we are getting to be better readers and writers using Fish Tank and Functional Morphology. We think it'll help others, other kids in Berkeley. We also think they will really enjoy this curriculum. Everybody gets to learn the same important material together. We all deserve to learn about challenging topics while we read and write. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, thank you Sylvia Mendez Scholars. Next, we will hear from Victoria, followed by Yazari. Mom, I just have one ask. As you're letting her stand up on the chair, just stand behind her and hold. I know you got it, I know you do.
My name is Victoria and I go to Sylvia Mendez. I am in kindergarten, I'm six. I felt sad when, and worried when I heard Miss Anita wouldn't work at my school anymore. I felt sad because she's great to have at my school. Miss Anita gets special snacks for kids with allergies. She helps us practice Spanish. She stops bullies from hurting people and helps them make friends. Me llamo Victoria y soy una estudiante de Sylvia Mendez. Estoy en kindergarten y tengo seis años. Me sentí triste y preocupada cuando supe que la señorita Anita ya no trabajará en mi escuela. Me sentí triste porque es un placer tenerla en mi escuela. La señorita Anita siempre compra comida especial para niños con alergias. Nos ayuda a practicar español. Cuando hay mantores, señorita Anita siempre les ayuda a hacer amigos. Y por ella nuestro programa es un lugar tranquilo.
Thank you, Victoria. Thank you so much, Victoria, our new bilingual queen of BUSD. Thank you, Victoria. Next, we will hear from Yazari, followed by Adelia.
Hello, my name is Yazari and I am a second grader at Thousand Oaks and student of We Rock. I love my teachers and it makes me sad that they may not be here to see me. Finish growing up. My teachers help me learn, feel safe, and do my best every day. Please keep Mr. Dante and it would mean the world to me. Without them, school wouldn't be the same. We need them and they need us too. Save our staff and help us keep them here, thank you.
Thank you Yazari. Next, we will hear from, is it Delia or Adelia? Delia, next we will hear from Delia.
Hi, my name is Delia and I go to Sylvia Mendez Elementary and I'm in third grade. I get sad when I hear that Miss Anita might not work at my school anymore. I, I'm happy when I see Miss Anita at my school because she prepares a lot of fun activities for us and she's really nice to us. I think that it would be really nice to keep her at our school because she helps us out when there are problems and she takes care of us really well.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Nicholas, followed by Lauren and Anma. Nico, Nicholas, is that you?
Yeah.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Nicholas Diaz-Cortez and, and I am in the third grade. Please don't fire Anita, Alejandra, Filma, Ephraim, Mira, and our other beautiful panda staffs. I don't know what I would do without them, thank you.
Hello, my name is Autumn and I go to Craigmont Elementary. I don't think it's fair for us to not have Miss Jasmine work at our school. She's the perfect combination of someone you feel like could protect you in an emergency, but also is one of the most kind and loving people you know. It's really unfair, especially since we have several teachers working in aftercare and it feels like she's the only one who is actually helping them coordinate. She also is always talking to other people, like my principal, Miss Cannon, and other people who work on the yard during the day. And so she always knows what's going on and always feels like she can help us feel, she can always make us feel safe. My yard is also open and without someone like Miss Jasmine, it's hard for us to feel safe.
Next, we will hear from Kalia, followed by Fern.
Hi, my name is Kalia and I'm a fourth grader at Washington Elementary and I met Mr. Dante at BAM Summer Camp a few years ago and I have never forgotten him since. I think that Mr. Dante should stay because he choreographed most of the dances at Thousand Oaks and he is funny and he helps put on all of the good shows and I always love to attend them. He is well-known. Also, it doesn't matter that he is at Thousand Oaks. I still go to see the performances and that's why I think he should not be let go.
My name is Fern and I'm a student at Thousand Oaks School. If I had one wish, it would be that Mr. Dante could stay with us at Thousand Oaks. He's the kindest, most warm-hearted and fun teacher I've ever had. When we're happy, he makes us happier. And when we feel sad, scared, or nervous, he always gives us love and support and helps, helps us feel better. I can't imagine our school without Mr. Dante. He works so hard every single day and we need him. So please, please, please let Mr. Dante stay with us at Thousand Oaks School.
Thank you to you both, Kalia and Fern. Next, Fern, next we will hear from Lillian and Olivia, followed by Ashley.
Good eve, good evening Superintendent Ford Mortel, President Brown, and esteemed members of the board. Malcolm X once said, "The most disrespected person in America is the black woman."
The most unprotected person in America is the black woman.
The most neglected person in America is the black woman.
My name is Olivia King.
And my name is Lillian King.
And my mother is Jasmine McCory, the before and after-school program site coordinator at Craigmont Elementary. Her job, her livelihood is being threatened. Not because she lacks dedication, not because she has failed, but because this district, the very one that claims to stand for equity, has turned its back on her. And now my family is paying the price. BUSD has been a safe haven for us as survivors of domestic violence. It gives us stability when our world was unstable. But now that security is being ripped away.
The decisions made today will change the course of my life and my siblings' lives. If families and communities are the foundation of student success, why is this district choosing to uproot mine? Oh, yeah. Let me tell you about the towering red, redwoods of Muir Woods. They grow over 300 feet tall, yet their roots are only six to 12 feet deep. How? Because their roots stretch outward, intertwining, holding each other up. No tree hoards resources. Every tree gets what it needs. If that, oh, sorry. Ready? Yeah, go ahead. That's how a community is supposed to work. So why is BUSD choosing to sever the roots of one of its strongest trees? If BUSD, if BUSD truly values equity, community, and student success, then it must act accordingly. Because no tree stand without the strength of this forest and no community thrives by tearing down its strongest roots. Thank you for your time and your commitment to all students and schools.
Before I, before I call up the next speaker, I just have to take this moment of personal privilege to say, it is great to hear all of our student speakers. However, Olivia used to be one of my students and so it is so great to see you in here advocating for your mom and I'm so, so proud of you and all that you're doing. Please give her a round of applause. All right. We will continue with our student speakers. I believe this is a group. Correct me if I'm wrong. So there's Ashley as well as Carla or just Ashley? Okay, Carla's a student, so we'll hear from Carla.
Mi nombre es Carla. Estoy en primer grado en Sylvia Mendez. Cuando yo escuché que señorita Anita se había ido, yo me sentí muy, muy triste. Una manera que ella me ha ayudado es con sentirme segura en la escuela. Gracias.
Gracias, Carla. Next, we will hear from Sophia, followed by Harlem.
Hi, my name is Sophia and I am in fifth grade and I go to Sylvia Mendez Elementary School. I think you shouldn't fire people like Alejandra, Anita, and other staff members because, for example, Alejandra supports parents, students, and others. She also does workshops for parents that want to help. Another example is Anita, who would take care of Lerns because Mr. Jason can't take care of all of those students. And those are some examples. Also, they all, they are a big part in our community. And that's why I think you should not fire all those people. Thank you.
My name is Harlem and I have known Mr. Dante since 2019 when he worked at Berkeley Arts Magnet. He was one of the best after-school teachers I've ever had. When the school district decided to transfer him to Thousand Oaks, my friends and I were heartbroken. He was always fun and participated, participated with us on the yard with games and music and he didn't just sit down and watch us. When I found out he started working at my cousin's school, Thousand Oaks, I was excited that she would have such a great after-school coordinator and I had been able to come and enjoy many performances that he has been a big part of. He makes all the difference. I have come to performances at many other Berkeley schools and I can definitely tell a Mr. Dante production. We als- we also learn during the performances and we have fun. We need more coordinators like the ones at Thousand Oaks, not less. School board, please figure it out.
Thank you both Sophia and Harlem. And our final student speaker card that I have here is for Jamie.
Okay, thanks. Good afternoon. My name is Jamie Lawrence. I'm a senior at Berkeley High. I'm here tonight because I'm deeply concerned about the potential layoffs that impact and could impact Berkeley High, especially when it comes to restorative justice program and student safety. Restorative justice isn't just a program. It's a vital part of how we support students, resolve conflicts, and create a safer, more inclusive school environment. Cutting staff like Ms. Shorty and Coach Rashad from OCI and Ms. Yolanda and Ms. Stacy from the Wellness Center doesn't just shrink a budget, it removes a crucial support system for students who need guidance, mediation, and a space to be heard. Without the program, we were seeing a decrease in student attendance, more students pushed out of classrooms, and a rising conflicts that could have been prevented through restorative dialogue. The absence of trained staff means fewer interventions, fewer opportunities to rebuild relationships, and ultimately, a less safe environment for everyone. So please, when talking about and considering decisions based about budget cuts, you take into account all the people you will be affecting. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie, and thank you to all of our student speakers. We will now move on to our adult speakers. Adults, the students definitely set the tone so you know what to do, okay? All right. You all will be given one minute to speak. Thank you. Adults, you will be given one minute to speak and we will begin with Forrest and then move on to Megan. We are moving on to the topics of teacher retirement as well as BUSD's support of LGBTQ+ students and faculty. So we'll first begin with Forrest and then move to Megan. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Bori.
You, um, well, I wasn't, I didn't realize there was going to be such a turnout with everybody and I do want to also-
I'm sorry, Mr. Bori. I'm going to stop you if you don't mind. We're going to restart your time. Folks who are in the room, we want to make sure that we get, we are able to hear and make sure that everyone else in the room who is also able to hear. And so if you have to have a conversation, we completely understand and respect that, but please make sure you don't do it in the room. Mr. Bori, we will start your time over and you can begin whenever you're ready.
Something, and I'm hoping that BUSD can support, create something to support to any weapons manufacturer or oil companies. And every paycheck I receive, a portion of that is going to them. And it's, it's not something I want and it's not something any teacher wants. So there are 90, 95% of schools in Palestine right now are out of commission and it is our earned money that is supporting that terrible catastrophe. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bori. Next, we will hear from Megan Bates and then we will move on to the adult speakers who are speaking on item 13.2 in regards to curriculum. So our first adult speaker after Megan will be Lindsay Knopfelt. Megan, are you in the room? Megan? Megan? Okay, we do not see Megan in the room, but if Megan does re-enter the room, we will go back to her. So we will have Nikki, Lindsay Knopfelt, followed by Nick Williams.
Okay. My name is Lindsay Knopfelt. I'm speaking as a member of Reading for Berkeley on the K-5 English Language Arts Curriculum Recommendation. We've been coming to you since October 22. So nearly three years of testimony you've heard from us. And we're proud to say that we're moving toward a systematic, evidence-based, knowledge-building approach based on and responsive to individual student data. It's an enormous undertaking and it is thanks to the leadership of people like Rose James that we're making these strides. We're really hopeful for a future of Berkeley students where every child, no matter their background or struggle, is expected to succeed. That's only possible with the support of a curriculum like Fish Tank and Foundational Phonics and Morphology. Together, they have the elements to meet the needs of our students. While this is a major milestone, it's only the beginning of a new, even harder phase. So we look forward to advocating and supporting teachers through the next essential part of the work.
Thank you, Lindsay. Next, we will hear from Nick, followed by Carrie.
Hello, I'm Nick Williams. I'm a first grade, 10 years in the district, 20 years in the classroom. And I've been a part of the literacy pilot adoption committee and I just wanted to speak to the integrity of this committee. As a teacher, it's been really astounding how much they have listened to teacher voice in this committee, how much they have honored us and come into our classrooms, watched us teach these curriculums. And I'm very excited for Fish Tank and Functional Phonics. More important than teacher voice, though, is students and my students just love these lessons. Every day, we're in a, we're in the middle of a folk tale unit. They cannot wait to read the next folk tale. We get out the map and find where-
Mary Johnston, I teach first grade at John Muir and I'm just adding to the- Science of Reading. And it's with that lens that we have been able to take part in a really rigorous and stimulating and engaging pilot process. It's been really inspiring to work with the other teachers who are super thoughtful. And as Nick said, the kids really like both of these programs. They're challenging and rigorous for all of the students and they also have supports for all of the students. They're really loving the engaging literature. And also, I think board work is fun, but it's not always fun in the curriculum that we've used, but it is really fun in Functional Phonics. So there's sometimes, times when my principal will come to the room and he'll be like, "I didn't even know that." And there's ways that we're talking about language that is giving the kids great skills. So I'm super excited about this. I love-
Followed by Maya Ochoa, who will both speak in regards to layoffs, Ophi layoffs.
Hello, good evening. Dear Superintendent Ford, Martell, and members of the Berkeley School District Board, my name is Nora Aguilar from Latinos Unidos de Berkeley. And as well, I'm a mother of two children in Sylvia Mendez and one in Longfellow. We are here to express our unwavering support for Sylvia Mendez, Family Engagement and Equity Specialist, Alejandro Frias, and other office staff from across the district, as well as the Lerns Program Coordinator, Anita Ryan. To strongly also to reconsider the decision to eliminate their positions. At a two-way Spanish immersion schools, Alejandro has played an essential role in ensuring equitable access to education for all families, particularly those from multilingual and historically underserved communities. Thank you very much.
Especially in a TWI program where so many students are navigating so many different things and trying to adapt. Alejandro plays a key role in anchoring. I added a little bit of my salsa, but go ahead, Myra.
Ella es quien escucha, orienta, y apoya a las familias en su camino dentro del sistema educativo. Gracias a su labor, los padres nos sentimos acompañados, informados, y empoderados para participar activamente en la educación de nuestros hijos.
She's, she- To really navigate an educational system that some of us don't really know or are learning about. Thanks to her job, we feel not only informed but accompanied. She holds our hands and she empowers us to participate and become active members of this community and helps us in the education of our kids here.
Eliminar o reducir esta posición sería un golpe a la conexión que mantiene unida nuestra comunidad escolar. Necesitamos su presencia, su experiencia, y su compromiso para seguir construyendo una escuela inclusiva y solidaria.
Taking away or eliminated her position would be a huge blow to the connection that maintains our, our school community. She really is an anchor again. We need her presence, her experience, and her commitment to continue to, to, to create a, a school culture that is not only inclusive, bilingual, and also is, is solidaria, ripe with solidarity.
Les pido que valoren este papel y aseguramos que siga siendo parte integral de nuestra comunidad porque nuestros hijos, estudiantes, y familia lo necesitan. Gracias.
I ask, I ask that we value her role and that we, we assure together that she continues to be an integral part of our community, for our kids, our families, and our students. Vamos, pandas.
Thank you very much for your comments. And just as an FYI to everyone, if this is your first board meeting, we do give additional time for translation and so that's why you saw a little bit more time for our last speaker, Ms. Ochoa. We do have a student speaker call, card that was actually not included with our student speaker pile. And so first, we want to apologize and then finally welcome up Theo and Tia, who are going to speak this evening. Please welcome them.
Hi, I'm the parent of Theo and Tia and they just lost a, a parent a few months ago. And Ms. Alejandra has literally, we wouldn't even be here today if it wasn't for her. I took off for a whole month. I couldn't even get out of bed. And I just want to say that her, Mr. Jason, really took time out their personal lives to just come to our house and they're the reason why my kids are here today and able to speak.
Just down here, okay? Hi, my name is Tia and I go to Longfellow Middle School and I wanted to say that Mr. Jason, Ms. Anita, and Ms. Adehanna was there for me and my family, when my dad died a few months ago. She has been like family to us too, all of them. And I wouldn't be able to attend school without their support. Thank you, Ms. Adehanna and Mr. Jason for being there for us.
Hello, my name is Theo and I don't want Ms. Anita or Ms. Adehanna to leave because they are really kind people and about them, the call wouldn't be the same and they really nice. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Theo and Tia and Mom, and keep going. We are proud of you and we love you and we are glad that this Berkeley community is here for you all. We will continue with our student, we will continue with our adult speakers who will speak in regards to layoffs for program specialists. So first, we will hear from Kathleen Russell. Next, we will hear from Unique Wells. And then finally- And then finally, we will hear from probably the best name of the night, Kadeja Bartlow. And I just say that because my name's Kadeja too. So Kathleen, Unique, and then Kadeja. And as they are coming, it is important to let you all know, especially those of you who are online, that we are having some technical issues with our sound online, and so our tech team is doing some troubleshooting. And so if you are not able to hear, we are working on that on our end. But we will ensure that this, this meeting is uploaded to YouTube this week, later on this week, and so you will be able to hear it at a later time. We are ready to receive you whenever you're ready, Ms. Bartlow.
Everybody, I just want to mention before I start. Yeah, good evening, everybody. I just wanted to mention that two years ago, my daughter was here advocating for the College Bound, and I'm honoring her tonight, and I'm going to talk also about myself. My name is Kadeja Bartlow. I'm a program specialist at Rosa Parks Elementary. Tonight, I would like to speak on behalf of the program specialist position. Since I started to work for the district as a learned program specialist, I pride myself for leading a high-quality program without a site coordinator, but under the supervision of Ms. Brazil Maxentire. Two years ago, the site coordinator position was created with the same job description, while the program specialists were performing the same job description for over 20 years. Today, our district has a deficit. In order to reduce it, drastic cuts are required. The coordinator position is, has a cost at almost $100,000 per
You may finish your sentence, Ms. Bartlow.
Yeah, per each coordinator per year.
You can absolutely cede your time to her. And so if the both of you are ceding your time, then you have two additional minutes. Or are you not ceding your time? Okay, then you have two additional minutes.
Okay, thank you very much. Having a program specialist per site will save the district at least $50,000 per site and $600,000 for 12 sites if we were 12 program specialists. Having 12 specialists because of our wages, the response is fiscally more responsible than having nine coordinators. We program specialists have been doing the same job as a site coordinator at a cheaper cost. In budget cuts, it is a more responsible choice. We program specialists have been doing and still willing to do the tasks that they voiced they don't want to be responsible for. Keeping the program specially during this financial crisis is the best solution. We want you, please, board, to reconsider the necessity to keep all the program specialists in place. Please save our jobs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I want to ensure that we did not miss Unique Wells. Oh, that was you. Okay, perfect. And then I want to make sure that we didn't miss Kathleen Russell. She is not here. Perfect. Thank you very much. Next, we will move on to layoffs regarding after-school, and so we will hear first from Evan, followed by Jasmine.
Let's feed my time to, or whatever you call it, to Jared Sanders, if that's okay.
Okay, and I just want to make sure I know who you are. Are you Mr. Evan?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much, Evan. Evan, you are going to cede your time to Jerry Taylor.
To Jared Sanders.
Oh, Jared. Jared, you come on up, and then and I know him. So Jared will go, and then after Jasmine, you will go. Oh, you're going to cede your time as well. Okay, perfect. Well, Jared, you have three minutes if you need it. So you have three minutes if you need it. Take the time that you need. Let it run. Let's go.
All right. Greetings, Superintendent Board members. Thank you for your time. This feels all too familiar. But my name is Jared Sanders. I am the Learns After-School Coordinator for King Middle School. I'm here to speak on behalf of the importance of my colleagues in the coordinator position, but also express my solidarity and confidence in the need for all our Learns staff to remain in place. From our specialists to our coordinators, ITs, everyone should remain where they are. For the past several years as an IT, or 15 years as an IT, and now as a coordinator, I've seen our programs lose wonderful employees as they pursue new careers and educational opportunities. But I admire that about our programs. Our programs was a feeder system for people to learn professional development and grow into bigger and better things for themselves. Some people stay for longer, some people leave sooner. But I think it was a point of pride for Learns to have people that came through, qualified, capable people that would come through and then pursue other careers, sometimes in education. That we had such talent moving on to new opportunities after developing professional BSD is a testament to the quality of people we have. However, in that time, since maybe that pandemic days, I've also seen our hiring rates slow down to a near standstill. And I've seen our staffing become more dependent on outside contractors. So instead of building from within, we've been supplementing and piecing it together with outside contractors. This external investment left our programs weaker than they once were, both culturally, financially, and at capacity. As can be seen with the hundreds of families on our waitlist that still can't get into after-school care, still can't get after-school care from us due to the lack of staffing and our mandated ratios. My purpose for being here is to implore you, Superintendent Board, not to reduce any Learns positions from coordinators, specialists, athletic directors. The quality and integrity of our programs rely on skilled, dedicated leaders with resolve and vision to remain at the helm. We have a vision, and we have been working on a proposal that will help the programs grow and continue to generate revenue, which is unique about our programs is that we can generate this revenue that will justify all our positions and Learns, and hopefully continue to build a prosperous program for all our USD community and students. We ask that you hear our proposal and our feedback as we want to be part of the solution. We are the internal investment that I promise will pay off. Thank you for your time and consideration. I look forward to speaking with you all very soon.
Thank you as well, Jared. Next, we will hear from Erin, followed by Kimberly, followed by Rashni. Okay.
Hello, Superintendent Board. Like Jared, I'm back again. Thank you for having us. I really was prepared to cede my time, but I'll just say this. I do want to piggyback on what Jared said. You know, I've been coordinators, then specialists, then back again to coordinator again for the last 20-plus years. I also seen the growth of our after-school program. I've seen the struggles outside contractors, staffing issues, and I know a lot of people who've been working, specialists, coordinators, everyone has worked very hard to push through these issues, whether it's racial issues and we're taking classes, whether it's us doing the role of two jobs. Some coordinators and specialists have been athletic directors. We've been everything. And so I just hope that the mass layoffs and everything, we don't, it doesn't lead to a restructuring that our kids and students suffer. That's the one thing I'm worried about. That's the one thing I cared about since I've been here. Thank you.
Are Kimberly and Rashni here and ready to speak tonight? Okay.
Should I go ahead?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you all. My name is Rashni Qasid, and I have a second. My name is Rashni, and I have a second grader Azad, and a younger son who will be an incoming TK student this fall at Thousand Oaks. Azad has been attending aftercare at Berkeley for the past three years at Thousand Oaks and is deeply committed or connected to the community there, which is very much due to the leadership, strong mentorship and program management on Dante and all the other aftercare staff there at Thousand Oaks. We were shocked when we learned that Dante and other aftercare staff were being eliminated, their roles were being eliminated, and immediately saw the Thousand Oaks community mobilize behind them. Aftercare is an integral part of the overall Thousand Oaks experience and is deeply connected to the school day program in large part due to Dante and the strong other aftercare providers there. Earlier this year, when my son was having challenges in his second-grade classroom, Dante and his school day teacher connected, and Dante immediately told Azad that the next time he has challenges, Dante would be happy to come in his classroom and assist him. I just want to say the staff are so connected and so deeply really just strong role models to our students, and we hope that you can retain their positions. Thank you.
Okay, so we have about 10 cards left, and then these 10 cards are under this, all under the same category. And so I'm going to ask if there are any folks who are ceding their time. If you could identify that at this time. If not, we will first move on to Ms. C., followed by Ilia. Are there any folks who are ceding their time? You're ceding your time? What's your name? Ilia, ceding your time? Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who is ceding their time out of Amanda, Dan, Lanisha, Emmett, Steve? Okay. Thank you. And are you Ms. Lanisha? Okay. And then we have Emmett, Steve, Lizzie, Jessica, and Travis. Are any of those folks ceding their time? Okay, so here's what we will do. Typically, typically, when you're speaking as a group, you get the five minutes. But what I think is happening is these are all individuals who are speaking as individuals. And so what we will do is we will continue the one minute. But because we are going over time for the board meeting, as a board member, I will actually cede my time for my comments tonight and not give any comments, so that all the people who took the time to come out and have a card and would like to speak may go ahead and do that tonight, okay? So first, we will hear from Mrs. C., followed by Amanda. We have Amanda C., and then we have Amanda Montez. So it's not the same person, but Ms. C., I know you, girl, so why don't you come on up? Okay.
Good evening, board members. Tonight, we are coming to you with urgent and necessary pleas from Berkeley Technology Academy. Berkeley Technology Academy staff and programs are instrumental in being able to offer alternative educational access to the most These students often need specialized programs and community partners like the staff at BTA. Our staff members, including Sandra Maldonado, Sofina Jones, Melina Landry, and Noah Tandu Williams, and the programs they provide to students.
Behind by BUSD. Taking away programs like Career Technical Education, Student Welfare, Office of Family Equity and Engagement, and Academic Counseling focused on one site will be felt tremendously by our small campus. These staff members put their heart into advocating for the students. We see these positions not as budget cuts, but as valuable members of our Berkeley technology community. We must stop the cuts of these essential BTA programs and commit to keeping BTA staff intact. Because our site is so small, even a single position cut makes a huge impact. I respectfully urge the board to see that BTA doesn't face any cuts this year and in the near future. Show us you care, show us you value our work, and keep BTA staff and community the same in the new school year. My final plea is to ensure safety and security for children across BUSD by keeping our after-school program staff and their respective directors for each site. The staff and security, the safety and security for our youth depend on it. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. C. Next, we will hear from Amanda Montez. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm going to pause you for just one second. Is Emmett a student? Okay, Emmett is a student, because I have Emmett's card as an adult, but Emmett is a student. And so Amanda, if it is okay with you, do you mind if our student goes before you, and then we'll call you back up, okay? Hi, Emmett, welcome.
I would like to say that Ms. Anita shouldn't be fired from our school because she is super nice.
Thank you, Emmett, for that super nice comment. Next, we will hear from Amanda, followed by Dan Brown.
Now, those two students are advocates for each other, and that is invaluable. In fact, that family is here tonight, and we found out, we go to the same church, and didn't even know that without Ms. Anita being in our lives to bring us together that way. And that was incredibly powerful for our two families. I want to mention something that I think is important that this board understands. This summer, my daughter was enrolled in Learns. We tried to pay for that program. We could not pay the district for Learns during the summertime. We are not the only family. There are multiple families that try to give you our money, and we could not give you money. I just want to say one short thing, that vital staff shouldn't suffer because of administrative mishaps. Neither should our students. Please count your summer enrollment numbers and your funds, and maybe we'll find a way to keep staff when we bank our funds appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Dan, followed by Lizzie.
So this is my layoff notice. Has a list of all the positions on it. You know, I'm just a lowly clerical assistant, so I mean, I'm not that close to the classroom, but you know, the filing still needs to be done. Administrators need their administrative assistance, because I don't think y'all would want to be doing, having to do all that yourselves. Additionally, I found out today that you can research this yourselves, but school districts that eliminated programs like OFI saw drops in attendance, which of course means a drop in money. So this is going to become a vicious cycle of layoffs, then drops in attendance, then more layoffs, and so on. And we've got all these about 16 IA positions and over 30 instructional specialist positions on here as well. Just, I, please let me finish. I harped on this last time, but why are all these jobs getting eliminated when I know for a fact, because I've seen the invoices, that we have enormous contracts with staffing companies for IA positions. And one of my coworkers did the math. It would be cheaper to just hire for those positions or retain these positions than the enormous amount. That's all.
Thank you. You may begin.
Okay, thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Lizzie Hager Barnard. I'm here tonight to strongly oppose a plan to reduce the Learns site coordinator positions. This decision would have devastating effects on our youngest students. This is especially true at Craigmont, given our established This is especially true at Cragmont, given our staffing situation and our very open campus. Cragmont's site coordinator, Ms. Jasmine McCrory, is the heart of our program. And over 140 caregivers and educators have signed a petition in support of her. Our community loves Ms. Jasmine and she has the skills and authority to run a program that prioritizes safety first. As you've heard earlier tonight from students, this is no easy feat. As Cragmont has one of the most open campuses in the district and a multi-tiered play area. Ms. Jasmine has taken critical steps to improve safety, such as making sure that community members who come onto campus before 6:00 PM are asked to leave and avoid security risks. I also ask that you consider whether your proposed changes are allowed by your grants and California's education code. Principals have already been wrongly told they have no say in hiring site coordinators despite California Education Code 8483.4 requiring their approval.
Next, we will hear from Jessica followed by Travis. And I want to, as they're coming up, Steve, are you commenting as an individual or on behalf of the union? Yes. For the union, so I'll call you up during union time, okay? So our last public commenters in person for this session will be Jessica followed by Travis.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent and Board. I'm the parent of a first grader at Sylvia Mendez. And I'm here tonight to add my voice to the communities to implore this board to utilize every measure at your disposal to avoid these layoffs district wide. I'm very moved by the showing tonight and the extent of these notices. I think speaking to the situation specifically at Sylvia Mendez, one thing that hasn't been mentioned tonight is that we know there's a shortage of bilingual staff that are available in the area to serve the school's unique mission. And we can't lose that expertise and that human capital. It's not just something that we can backfill for easily when our budget pressures are alleviated. The actions would severely compromise our current and our future ability to deliver on those collective core values that we hold. Our budget choices, I realize they are difficult, they are choices, are the most meaningful indicator of our values. Thank you.
Thank you as well. And then finally, we will hear from Travis.
In a time where education in this country is under imminent attack, I rise to express my unwavering support for Mr. Dante, who has been an incredible educator and positive influence on my 10-year-old daughter Fern. It is imperative that the Berkeley Unified School District understands the profound impact Mr. Dante has had, not only on her academic growth, but also on her personal development. Mr. Dante goes above and beyond what is expected of an educator. He fosters an environment where children feel safe, motivated and eager to learn. My daughter Fern consistently comes home excited about what she's learned in his after school program and speaks highly of how he educates critical, or excuse me, encourages critical thinking, creativity and self-confidence. Beyond academics, Mr. Dante has instilled in her a genuine love for learning and a sense of responsibility that is rare to find. It would be a grave mistake to overlook or undervalue the dedication and positive influence Mr. Dante brings to the school. Educators like him are the backbone of a thriving school system. I don't know. And his ability to connect with students, challenge them intellectually and nurture their potential is something that should be celebrated and supported, not questioned or put at risk.
Thank you. It is my hope that our sound is now working online. We have 11 additional public commenters who will be speaking online. Each of you will be given one minute to speak. We will begin with Rachie followed by Mati. And Ms. Chavez, if you can please go ahead and promote them. At this time, we are beginning the public comment period for folks online. And so we will not be accepting any more commenters at this time. So our last commenter will be David. Rachie, whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Thank you so much. Good evening, members of the board superintendent and community. Thanks for coming out tonight. My name is Rachie Lee. I'm a mom to a sixth and eighth grader at King. First, I want to recognize the important progress this district has made. I've been following the literacy issue. And I think the district has made incredible progress in identifying what appears to be a really great elementary curriculum. This is a critical first step and so congratulations. At the same time, I want to speak about my personal experience. My own son, sixth grade, still struggles with the reading delay. And I know firsthand that had he had a strong research-based curriculum, it would have made a difference. I want to emphasize that while this is a really amazing progress, the work is not done. Choosing the curriculum is just the beginning. The implementation is going to be really hard. Our teachers deserve real support. I urge the board to commit to budgeting for sustained teacher training for at least the next two academic years. I also ask the board to closely monitor implementation by scheduling regular check-ins and updates to assess progress and identify challenges and ensure accountability and establish clear metrics for what successful implementation will look like, including getting student feedback. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rachie. Next, we will hear from Mati. And as a reminder to our online public speakers, you will see the timer in the back. As soon as I'm done talking, it'll pop up, but you'll see the timer in the back. So if you could just check periodically and you will know when your minute is close, close to ending. Okay? Next, we will hear from Mati followed by Milner.
Good evening, Board. I'm, I'm calling to talk about the board policy regarding adoption of curriculum. I have recognized that since the last comments from last fall, you replaced the word "may" consult with may provide opportunities for input to parents. You replaced that word with "shall." I'm not a lawyer, but I understand the difference. But still, that leaves parents in the very, very back seats together with representatives of local businesses, et cetera. While looking at the regulation, it does recognize that what you, the process that went last year of approval of the U9 curriculum was against and contradicts the regulation that you just approved. And it is my hope that going forward, you will indeed follow this regulation that says that curriculum.
Thank you, Mati. I believe you got cut off finishing your sentence. But as always, you are free to email your comments to the Board of Education. Next, we will hear Milner followed by Laura.
Hello, I'm Corinne Gibbs and this is my husband Jules Munabraghi. And we have two children in BUSD, one in eighth grade at King Middle School and the other in fourth grade at Thousand Oaks Elementary. We really greatly appreciate the Learns after school programs, both at King and We Rock, especially the after school program at We Rock led by Mr. Dante and his very capable staff of specialists.
Want to second what Corinne said and particularly just add that Mr. Dante Gallen as a program site coordinator and Ms. Austinath Wiggins as a key teacher are really important, both in their organizational and creative contributions and to We Rock. And we want to ask that you please keep them at Thousand Oaks in these roles.
Thank you.
Thank you as well. Next, we will hear from Laura followed by Paula Phillips. So what we, since Laura has dropped off, what we'll do is we'll keep her place. And then if she gets back on Zoom, we will make sure she has the opportunity to speak. So may you please promote Paula followed by La Monica.
Good evening.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Been a while. My name is Paula Phillips. I'm District's Class Five Professional Development Coordinator. I'm the only person tasked with coordinating training for the district's 400-plus classified employees. I received a March 15 notice along with my classified colleagues. During the last board meeting, President Brown said going forward, she wanted staff to be transparent with the layoff process. Unfortunately, that ship has sailed. The only resolutions that were listed on the March 5 agenda were for 169 classified positions and 20.6 FTE certificated staff. The word around the district is that additional certificated teachers, TSAs, directors and principals receive non-relect or probationary release notices too. And the only way we know they did is because our colleagues said they did. Due to the lack of transparency, I have a few questions that I want you to ask yourselves and staff. One, were these the only two resolutions on the consent calendar? If the board voted in closed session to non-reelect prob release or to eliminate or discontinue additional certificated positions according to the ed code, why were they done in closed session, if they were? And why did this year's process change from years past? A process that hasn't changed legally, a process to vote on all preliminary layoff notices in public session. Why was there a lack of transparency if we all have to shoulder the burden of layoffs? If the board approved additional layoffs in closed session, it was crafty and disingenuous. And it left me feeling disrespected, devalued and unappreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. As you know, it is not our, our typical practice to respond to public comment. But please know that whatever we've decided to do in closed session, we have ensured that it is done in open session. And so thank you for this very important information and update that we are unaware of, but we'll handle as we need to. Thank you. Next, can you please promote Ian followed by Ramona and Asa?
Hello?
Hello, you may begin.
Oh, did you call my name?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Eliza No. I'm commenting to support the district's choice of evidence-based elementary ELA curriculum. Additionally, I offer some suggestions for the three-year implementation plan. First, strengthening instructional practice differentiation and equity should be a parallel focus from the start. Do not wait until two years from now to make focal students a priority. It is not true that a rising tide raises all boats because some boats have leaks. District LCAP data demonstrate that focal students cannot wait. From an equity standpoint, if you center the needs of our most marginalized, then it raises everyone. Second, the curriculum adoption process to prepare, study and decide makes no mention of engaging community stakeholders. Continue engaging with students and families all throughout the implementation process. And importantly, close the loop when we, when we give you constructive feedback. The curriculum and development and evaluation board policy requires that the process shall provide opportunities for input from students, parent caregivers, caregivers and other community members. Finally, invest in expanding the number of literacy leaders who will be doing the heavy lifting of professional development, coaching and supporting teachers. One literacy coach cannot do it all. There are still teachers, including education specialists, who need help with implementing evidence-based methods with fidelity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Ramona and Asa followed by Anita. You may begin. Unfortunately, we cannot hear your sound. So give us just a second and maybe on you, you're in, can you check and make sure that there you go?
Okay, so sorry. Hi, my name is Ramona and I'm an eighth grader at King Middle School. My brother currently goes to Thousand Oaks Elementary, which is where I went as well. After school programs like We Rock and Learns are non-negotiable. The school board has over 115 parents signing to keep Mr. Dante, who helps run the We Rock program at Thousand Oaks, alive. My mom is a single parent and without We Rock, she can't work. And if she can't work, she can't support me and my brother. More importantly, We Rock is a place for kids to go after school that is joy-filled, safe, happy and welcoming. And that's all because of Mr. Dante. Whenever I go to pick up my brother, the kids are all smiling and having fun. In fact, my brother loves Mr. Dante so much and the We Rock staff that he insists on being the last kid there and won't leave until 6:00 PM. Mr. Dante and the We Rock staff make every kid feel happy, empowered and courage and encouraged. The staff need to secure, and the staff need to feel secure in their employment just as much as these kids need this program to continue on. Thank you for listening.
Next, can you please promote Anita followed by Rachel?
Hello, can you hear?
Yes, we can hear you. Welcome.
My name is Monita Ryan and I'm the after school coordinator at Sylvia Mendez. I speak tonight on issues that prevent Learns from delivering essential services to families. Today, we heard testimony on the importance of retaining all of our after school members, from specialists to coordinators to ITs through these budget cuts. While funding at the federal and state level are out of our control, the viability of after school programs is very much in our hands. We have uncracked potential to be sustainable and self-sufficient, serve more families and invest in our own communities. Instead, the leaders who can make that happen are being cut to save money. While our district is paying the equivalent of four IT salaries for a single ALVO coach to do the exact same work with less impact. I implore the board to invest in our own communities. Find long-term solutions that represent the values and needs of Berkeley families. Cut these contracts, not our after school leaders.
Thank you, Ms. Anita. Next, we will hear from Rachel followed by our final public commenter this evening, who is David. Hi.
Hi, I'm Rachel Doty. I'm a parent of a student at Longfellow and also a student at Sylvia Mendez. I'm also on the PTA at Sylvia Mendez. And I just wanted to speak in support of the staff and the support staff at the school. The most important thing to our students, as is obvious from the comments tonight, is the people who actually have face-to-face contact with them and maintaining continuity in that and trying the best we can as a district to avoid the annual pink slip, you know, trauma that we inflict upon the staff who are so important to our students and often are the ones who are the least well-paid. It just feels really unfair. And so I understand their important decisions and compromises the district has to make, but I would really hope that this is the place that we strive to maintain these important positions. Thank you.
Thank you as well. We'll move on to our final public commenter, David.
Good evening. Board and Superintendent, I'm David Schroeder from Berkeley Independent Study. For decades, my math students barely got by without a counselor, but then the BIS coordinator and administrative and assistant positions were cut, and students totally lost support disproportionately the third of them who have special needs. Yet, thanks to the school board, BIS recently gained a dedicated full-time counselor to support high-need students and avoid transferring delays for weeks of school during which time students just couldn't attend any classes. So here's the takeaway. Saving our counseling positions saves the district attendance revenue. Just don't merge and cut the BIS and BTA counselor positions. Just don't cut BTA and BIS. Thank you.
Thank you as well. We will move on to our committee comments. Our committee comments include, I know there is one comment tonight, someone who will speak on the African-American Advisory Committee. Are there any other committee comments this evening? If there are, I'm going to ask that you please come up to the podium to speak at this time. Okay, we'll have PAC comments as well. Ms. Chavez, do you see Spencer online? He's online, okay. So what we'll do is we'll take Spencer, who is ready to go, and then after that, we will take our PAC comments.
Hi there. Good evening, Board Directors, Superintendent, and the Berkeley community. My name is Spencer Pritchard, and I'm the co-chair of the Black Studies Department at Berkeley High School and a member of the Superintendent's African-American Success Advisory Committee and the AASAC representative to the Superintendent's Budget Advisory Committee. The AASAC has produced quarterly meeting, had a productive quarterly meeting last week where we received an update from the superintendent on student data trends. Various AASAC members shared their work in the Berkeley community. The Berkeley Schools Fund shared its theory of change and key equity grant investments, and we learned more about their ways to support the upcoming Oratorical Fest on March 26. An important topic for the AASAC, and frankly, all of us, is the impact of the budget reductions the board has to make in light of U.S. Department of Education funding decreases. As the BOC board considers tough and difficult decisions this spring, we would like to remind the board that investing in African-American student success is still vital and important. Recent data from the 2025 Ed Trust West Black Minds Matter report highlights why continued investment in African-American student achievement must continue. For instance, 17% of black students in California have teachers who look like them compared to 87% of white students who have white teachers. Three in 10 met English Language Arts standards. 18% are proficient in math. 78% graduation rate compared to 89% for white students. Black students in the state are still three times as likely to be suspended as white students. Chronic absenteeism increased for African-American students in the 2023-24 academic year from 21% to 33% compared to 16% for white students. I also want to include that they did share highlights such as African-American Studies Department at Berkeley High School as different solutions as well. So these student data points are compelling and a call to action for best practice intervention in this district. While these data points are daunting and unsettling, the AASAC believes in leadership of this board, superintendent, staff, families, students, and community to accelerate improvement for African-American and ultimately all the USD students. We commend the district's team for the gain shared at the February 19th BUSD Board of Ed meeting in both the Winter Star reading and math results for the African-American and all students. We would like to also include the ways that the ASF district partners support the district's efforts to accelerate achievement for students, including urge under the leadership of Ikura Davis. The Young Gifted and Black provides ongoing growth mindset and social emotional learning support. City Berkeley works through Youth Equity Project, which Nina Goldman leads, supporting several Berkeley orgs serving USD students. Duffy Ross and her leadership runs the Berkeley Public Schools Program, invests in school sites and community orgs. And College Bound led by Dr. Darlene Willis provides monthly college-going strategy sessions. As I wrap up my comments, I'd like to invite the BUSD community to attend the Third Annual BUSD African-American Success Framework Transition Fairs on Saturday, April 19th for students transitioning from eighth to ninth grade at Berkeley High School in the Donahue Gym, and on Saturday, April 26th for students transitioning from fifth to sixth grade at the Martin Luther King Middle School. Both Transition Fairs are from 10:00 AM to 11:30 AM. Transition Fairs play an important role in helping students sit down and see around the corner as they approach important grade-level transitions. The AASAC would like to give a special shout out to Berkeley High School's Principal Wendy Gozen, coming play for their partnership and thought leadership in designing this year's eighth to ninth grade transition fair. And finally, I want to express our appreciation to former BTA Principal Heidi Weber for her strong support of the African-American Success Framework implementation at BTA over the past few years. Thank you so much, and that's my time.
Thank you, African-American Success Framework Advisory Committee. Now we will hear the comments from our Parent Advisory Committee.
Good evening. My name is Jessie Labrandy, and I am here as the co-chair of the LCAP Parent Advisory Committee to give an update on the PAC's progress. As in past years of the PAC, we have struggled with incomplete representation and low attendance from members. We currently have several unrepresented schools and have failed to meet quorum at three of our six meetings. Thanks to the help of our district admin, we have been able to somewhat increase attendance by calling members with a reminder a few days before each meeting. And I'm happy to report that after my co-chair stepped back at the end of January, another PAC member stepped forward, and I have a new co-chair, Cielo Rios. This year, the PAC has agreed to focus on three areas: addressing barriers in the school-home connection, academic intervention, especially at our elementary schools, and ensuring focal student groups are fully supported. Since my last PAC update, we have had three meetings, each one covering one of those focus areas. At each of these meetings, we received a presentation from district staff, and the PAC discussed current strengths and areas for improvement and noted further questions to investigate. Our first of these meetings, we met to discuss our first focus area, barriers in the school-home connection. This focus closely aligns with the LCAP Goal Four. We invited members from the Office of Family Equity and Engagement to join us and present on their work. PAC members expressed that OFI's work is invaluable, both in building one-on-one relational trust with focal families and holding community events to support our students outside of the classroom. We did note that OFI's visibility varies widely between the school sites, and there remains work to be done in building awareness of OFI services among our focal families so that they can access these services. At our next meeting, we discussed our second focus area, academic intervention. This focus aligns neatly with the LCAP Goal Two. We received presentations from Rose James and Mandy Hubbard on the district's work on literacy and math. Lena Sweeney also gave us an overview of the district's RTI system. PAC members recognize the critical nature of coaching and intervention in supporting our students' learning. We appreciated the district's continued work on literacy, especially with literacy coaches working in every elementary and middle school as we see increases in our focal population's STAR and DIBELS testing results. And while we are excited to see the work that has been started through the Meeting of the Math Minds, some PAC members were frustrated that math intervention is currently very limited at the elementary level, and some sites do not have any math coaches. PAC members also recognized the need to ensure all students and caregivers have support and understanding in accessing IEPs and 504 plans. We need to continue working to build awareness of different learning styles and to reduce stigma, especially within our focal populations. At our last meeting, we discussed our final focus area, supports for focal student groups, aligning with LCAP Goal Three and touching on aspects of LCAP Goal One. We started with a presentation from Dr. Shelley and Amelia Lewis discussing McKinney-Vento supports for housing insecure students in our district. PAC members were excited to hear about the new signs and enrollment forms, the personalized support available to these students, especially in regards to transportation, and the ongoing training for staff and teachers to address stigma around unhoused students and families. However, there were deep concerns regarding our McKinney-Vento family's admissions office experience. We noted a strong need for anti-bias communication and utmost discretion regarding McKinney-Vento qualifications so that every family that qualifies feels safe enrolling in the program. At this meeting, we also invited Mary Patterson to present on the Avid program and Jessie Luxford to present on Bridge. The PAC appreciated the work done by both of these programs, and we know that families and students in both Avid and Bridge speak very highly of their work. But we were left with concerns about enrollment in both programs given Bridge's limited capacity and the fairly specific profile of students that Avid serves. PAC members also wondered about the numerous support and acceleration programs available to our students. With so many different programs, how can we ensure that we are efficiently serving the needs of our students? And how can we spread awareness of these programs among focal students and families? Our next meeting is tomorrow evening, and we will dig into the results from the district-wide LCAP survey. At our remaining meetings, we will address follow-up questions from PAC members and prepare our official recommendations to the superintendent and the board. Thank you.
Thank you as well. We will move on to our union comments. Yes, is right. We will move on to our union comments, and we will receive them in the order that they are listed on the agenda. So we'll receive comments from BFT. I know that there is a video, followed by comments from BCC-E. If there are comments from you, we will hear those. And then we will hear Steve Collins, who will make comments on behalf of Local 21. Ms. Chavez, do you need some time to load up? Okay, here's what we'll do. While Ms. Chavez loads up the comments for BFT, we'll actually move on to BCC-E for your comments.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent, and BCC-E members. The 164 BCC positions targeted for layoffs are not just numbers. They represent dedicated individuals who provide vital support to students and families. These cuts are not just fiscal decisions. They are cuts to student support, equity, and community stability. We hear the district's commitment to excellence, equity, engagement, and enrichment. Yet those values are now at risk. BCC-E demands four things: accountability, accessibility, answers, and actions. Accountability: The district must take responsibility for ensuring these layoffs are strategic and justified. Staff reductions must be paired with a clear plan that identifies how essential services will continue without compromising student success. Accessibility: Critical data that informs the decisions must be transparent and available. We demand full disclosure promptly of the analysis used to determine which positions were targeted and how those choices align with the district's priorities. This will allow BCC-E to best support our members and be a true thought partner in the process. Answers: Families, employees, and the community deserve clear explanations. How will the district fill the gaps left by these reductions? What alternative solutions were considered? How will the district ensure students receive the same level of support they rely on today? Action: The district must proactively address these concerns by reevaluating the proposed cuts and prioritizing reductions that protect employees who are vital to student well-being and district stability. Our students rely on people, not spreadsheets, in times of crisis. Positions like student welfare and attendance specialists, family engagement coordinators, and restorative justice leaders are irreplaceable. These are mentors, advocates, and trusted connections for students seeking guidance and support. Their absence will leave students vulnerable and disconnected. As Sebastian Garcia-Fasto, a 10th grader at Berkeley High School, put it, "All these educators have helped us grow and become better people. Without them, lots of students would be lost and confused." Beyond student services, these cuts undermine critical financial oversight. For example, cutting a budget analyst two jeopardizes the management of $53.7 million in special education and maintenance budgets. The special education budget alone is one of the most complex in the district, requiring constant oversight, reporting, and meticulous financial management. Over the past four years, this analyst has generated over $1.1 million in additional revenue through diligence and expertise. Cutting a budget analyst one eliminates oversight of the district's general fund bank accounts and the management of critical school site funds like PTAs and the principal discretionary funds, who will ensure these essential financial processes continue without disruption. Decisions about these roles must be informed by an understanding of their significance and impact. Meanwhile, the district continues to spend heavily on contractors while loyal, experienced employees face layoffs. Are these cuts truly addressing financial stability? Or will they create long-term costs in academic achievement, student well-being, and district operations? We also request that the district conduct a thorough investigation into the rationale behind these cuts in each department and provide a clear plan detailing how essential services will continue to function if these positions are eliminated. Transparency and accountability are crucial to ensuring the district remains stable and effective. Layoffs don't just move employees. They destabilize the system, erode trust, and weaken the foundation for success. Board members, Superintendent, and district leaders, we urge you to carefully reconsider these 164 BCC classified support positions. Prioritize strategic reductions that maintain stability. Start at the top. Protect the staff who are vital to our students, families, and schools. Our students deserve better. Our community deserves better. We will not back down on our fight for what's right.
Ms. Chavez, are we ready? All right, Ms. Chavez, are we ready? If not, we will actually go ahead and move on to Steve Collins. Okay. Steve, you are welcome to come and make your comments at this time.
Hello, board. I'm with the International Federation of Professional and Technical Engineers, better known as Local 21. I am here today with Angela Long, our Local 21 business rep, and with the now-famous and with the now-famous Dante Gallin. And I'm going to let each of them speak, and then if there's time after, I'll say a couple more words.
Thank you. Hello, board. I'm Angela Long. I'm the rep for Local 21, and I'm here today on behalf, thank you. I'm here today on behalf of our members who received layoff notices. We have four single-person classifications that received notices: African-American Success Project Manager, Classified Professional Development Coordinator, Family Engagement and Equity Supervisor, and our Nutritional Education Program Supervisor. Laying these individuals off and leaving these classifications vacant would have an enormous negative effect on the programs that they run and the communities they serve, as would laying off the nine after-school program coordinators after losing three of these positions last year. These members provide vital services and oversight to their programs that are of critical importance. The impact of losing any more of these positions would be felt throughout the community and make it extremely difficult for the programs to continue to run successfully. In order to maintain the integrity of the program, we must not lose one more after-school program coordinator. We understand the budget is not finalized, and there are many difficult decisions to be made, but we urge you not to cut any more of these important positions. And I'm handing it over to Dante.
Hello, everyone. First off, I want to acknowledge and thank all the families and the students that spoke on my behalf. Thank you so much. And to the students that spoke on any of these topics, keep using your voice. Also, I would like to thank the Berkeley District as a whole for supporting my sister, who is LaNisha, and my nephew Theo and my niece Tia when tragedy struck their family. Like, it was a lot of support, so thank you. Good evening, board members. My name is Dante Gallin Odoa, and I stand before you today as a dedicated coordinator, speaking not just for myself, but for all of my colleagues who are at risk of losing our positions. Many of us coordinators came up through the BCC-E Union, earning promotions through years of dedication to our students and programs. We have worked tirelessly to build strong, thriving programs, and now we are being told that our jobs, jobs that were created out of district necessity, are no longer valued. This decision is not just unfair to us, but it is a direct blow to the quality of the programs that so many families rely on. Coordinators are the backgrounds of these programs. We handle the administrative work, oversee day-to-day operations, tend to students' and parents' needs, and supervise both staff and students. We are the ones making critical decisions, ensuring safety, resolving conflict, and maintaining the quality standards that keep the programs running effectively. Without us, there is no leadership on-site. There is no oversight. There is no consistency. The proposed alternative, having program specialists absorb these duties, is simply not viable. These responsibilities fall outside of their job descriptions and simply not fair to acts of them without compensation. Their jobs are important, too. These duties will then fall into the laps of principals who already have a heavy workload and don't always know the ins and outs of the after-school program, and frankly, shouldn't have to deal with added responsibilities. Rotating coordinators between schools is equally damaging as it disrupts the relationship, the relationships we've built with students, families, and staffs. Community and trust takes time to establish, and the continuity is essential for the program's success. This would actually traumatize and devastate the students and this, sorry, students and disrupt the community-building practices that are necessary to help these students with their development and in the after-school programs. Parents look forward to joining our programs based off the work that we do. You would never expect a school to function without a principal. Why then would you expect a program to function without a coordinator? It is beyond disheartening that the district would rather allocate millions to outside vendors, such as a Level, rather than invest the dedicated BUSC staff who have already proven their commitment to these programs. Eliminating coordinators is not a cost-saving solution. It is a decision that will directly harm students, families, and staff. We have created a plan that could help keep our jobs while also finding a solution to help with the financial funk that we did not create. We urge you to reconsider, keep the positions, keep the quality, keep the leadership that the programs need to thrive. Our students deserve nothing less. Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you as well. Are we ready to receive our BFT comments? Okay, here we are.
Hello, Superintendent Ford Morthell and the Berkeley School Board Directors. I am Matt Meyer, President of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. Tonight, I am bringing to you some concerns that I believe were completely preventable. I will start with layoffs. As you can see from the turnout tonight, layoffs are no joke. Although the district says they are only notices of possible layoffs, they do carry with them the very real possibility that someone may lose their job, thus their livelihood. Our members and members of other unions in BUSD do not know what is really under consideration and what isn't. BUSD claims they are reducing employees to fill in a deficit in the budget. That deficit, when you add in the revenue from new enrollment numbers and figure in other savings already identified, is relatively small, especially compared to the deficits other districts are experiencing who are already rescinding layoff notices. If you were to add up the monetary value of all the positions being laid off, it would equal tens of millions of dollars. There is a major disconnect between the layoff notices and the need to reduce spending. The district not only overnoticed, there's no timeline to rescind these notices. This means that our employees at the district has invested considerable professional development into, whose kids go to our schools and who have been working for the district for many, many years, do not know if they have a job. As a member of the Superintendent Budget Advisory Committee, I shared at last week's Sback meeting how the use of layoff notices as a tool to move towards the target causes concern. The Sback presentations have been unclear as to what's real and what's not real. I also noted that we, as a committee, have had very little discussion on positions, making it difficult for me to articulate to members which positions are being considered and which are not. Know that other districts are hiring now. Our longtime educators, as well as classified staff and administrators, are actively looking for work outside BUSD. Many educators were devastated to receive these letters. There is no communication about why they're getting this and what the steps will be to rescind these notices. I've talked to many educators in tears, unable to make sense out of what is happening to their career. The numbers just don't add up. BUSD needs to be more transparent with our community and staff about the cuts it actually intends to make and stop this madness of giving notices to a quarter of our employees that work for them. These notices need to be rescinded immediately. We are also experiencing the same delays and deprioritization that we experienced last year with regards to our contract negotiations. The district has not brought our sunshine to the board, even though BFT submitted it in time to be on the March 5th agenda. Our first meeting has been delayed until after spring break because the sunshine is not on today's agenda. What could have begun next week will have to take place three weeks from today. We have a completely open contract and many issues that need to be addressed through negotiations. We have many proposals already ready to go that align at the three pillars of our "we can't wait for the schools our students deserve" bargaining platform. The three pillars include fully staff our schools, improve educator pay, and stability for our students. This platform represents our broader goals and integrates the work we are doing with education unions across the state. We are hoping to achieve, through collective bargaining, contract language that will keep our counselors and support staff, establish solutions to our sped department, set forth competitive pay and benefits, fair compensation for after-school work meetings, breaking the cycle of contracting out positions in BUSD, protections against layoffs, displacements, and disruptions to the continuity of our student services. We really hope something changes soon. Thank you.
Well, there's that. All right, thank you as well for your comments. We will now actually move on to our board comments and all of our board members. Oh, I'm so sorry. We will now move on to our UBA comments. I'm so sorry, UBA.
Good evening. I'm Alexander Hunt, the President of the Union of Berkeley Administrators. I have been a principal at BUSD for 15 years, and I'm here representing the principals, vice principals, deans, coordinators, and program supervisors that make up our union. This is a time of both excitement and apprehension for our members. We're excited about the prospect of a new language adoption in elementary school, like you heard about this evening, aligned with the learning we've had over the past several years. We are apprehensive about how the budget cuts we are facing this year will impact our ability to serve our students and accomplish our district's mission. We understand that the board didn't create this budget situation and come to you to advocate for a few steps that we believe the board can take to help us retain our staff in the face of budget uncertainties. As you know, a few days ago, over 300 BUSD staff members from BCC-E, BFT, Local 21, and UBA received layoff notices or notices of potential reassignment. The administrators have been fielding a lot of questions about what these notices mean and a lot of feelings about that. In our own union, more than half of our members received a notice of potential reassignment, including all vice principals, coordinators, and deans. While we realize that the notices do not mean that all of these positions will be cut, this is a demoralizing message to our experienced and dedicated staff. While these leaders are dedicated to our students, this uncertainty signals that they should begin looking for work outside of Berkeley in order to be responsible to their own families. To compound this message, we are currently out of contract after a year of negotiations, and the current district offer represents a reduction in total compensation for all UBA members with a salary increase that does not match the cost of living that was approved. By not offering competitive compensation while simultaneously showing people the proverbial door, we run the risk of losing talented administrators. This is a time when there is a critical shortage of qualified and experienced administrators, teachers, and classified staff in California. In order to attract and retain qualified administrators, I urge the board to empower the district bargaining team to come to the table with an offer that isn't less than every other union with a settled contract and less than what the board approved for non-representative management. We know that the board can't make money magically appear to solve the budget crisis and that there will be hard decisions to be made. We urge the board to support quickly rescinding as many notices as possible across all unions to avoid losing talented and experienced staff, again, across all unions. This will require the creation of a plan that minimizes the impact of necessary cuts on students' experience at school. Creating a plan like this requires listening to many voices, and yet it's critical that it happens quickly so that we don't lose our highly qualified teachers, administrators, and classified staff. I also urge the board to consider allowing school sites to budget for staffing for '25-'26 using unencumbered site carryover money from BSEP and other funds. While this is not our usual practice, it would give schools the flexibility to preserve some positions and programs that we would not be otherwise able to fund or that may no longer be centrally funded. This is the equivalent to what districts are doing when we dip into our reserve or budget using one-time funds. It isn't our usual way of doing business, but this is an unusual year. It doesn't solve the long-term structural problem, but it would give us needed flexibility to support our students this upcoming year. There are clearly difficult decisions up ahead to be made. For the members of the Union of Berkeley Administrators, our day-to-day involves figuring out how to maximize student safety, prioritize essential learning, and ensure equitable outcomes for our students. That isn't our union work. That's our day job. It's our hope that these are the same guiding principles that the board brings to this budget-making process. We welcome the opportunity to be involved in these kinds of conversations that put students at the center as we work towards making the best of a difficult budget year. Not to be partial to my own school, but at Malcolm X, our motto is "Together We Can." And this budget conversation is the kind of crisis that can pull communities together or pull communities apart. And we really need to be together in this conversation, and it will take a willingness to compromise and listen, to cooperate, not compete. I believe that Berkeley, as a community, should be up to this challenge. Thank you very much.
Thank you as well, UBA. And again, my apologies for that mistake. We will now go on to our board member comments. And what the adult board members have decided to do is, again, cede our time to the public commentators who were speaking this evening. But we will hear from our student board director, and then we will hear from our superintendent.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon. I'm Aisha Garcia, one of the student board representatives for Berkeley Technology Academy. First of all, I'd love to thank all of you that could attend today. It really means the world to me to know that people still care very deeply about education and the people who would make it happen. But as I sit here tonight, I can only think about the cuts being made at my small school of BTA, where many students may need extra help and/or our special needs. Every staff member at that school has made a difference in not only my life, but many others as well. Out of the 16 full-time staff members of BTA, I believe four have been pink-slept. That's a quarter of our staff. From counselors to teachers, I've been able to form beautiful, meaningful relationships where I can not only rely on them to teach, but talk to. Without them, our school wouldn't be doing as good as it is now. The staff are our pillars that hold us up. Please don't forget that. Thank you.
Good evening, BUSD family. Good evening. Listen, it was like 100 of y'all in here in the beginning. Let's, let's get that same energy. Good evening, BUSD family. So I'm feeling some kind of way, because I gave up my time, because the babies were so cute, and we had to hear from them. But the reason why I typically go before public comments, one, is because we usually have a full room up until public comments are over, but two, because I think that, or I try to, share and say things that are relevant and responsive to the themes and the concepts that are being shared in public comments. And so it is clear to all of us that a good number of folks who had things to say and had questions are no longer in this space, but I do hope that they are listening online and that you share with them what I'm about to share with you. So get your notepads out, and let's take some notes. So two years ago, I created what's on the screen here, and these are BUSD core values for resource allocation. These values guide all decisions that we make in BUSD with regard to resource allocation. At the last board meeting, our president reiterated the need for one of those values, transparency, to be at the forefront. We define transparency here as believing it essential that the community understands the criteria and conditions that inform the allocation of resources. With this value in mind, and in response to your calls for greater transparency, I have launched a regular budget update video series for our staff to provide more detail about our budget development cycle. They're like three to five minutes, but we will be providing those updates regularly. The first one actually came out today. We have also introduced a special budget section in our weekly staff bulletin, and I will be providing some level of budget update in all of my board comments going forward at these meetings. Additionally, our staff will be making regular board presentations that both talk about the budget itself, as well as the budget process throughout the weeks and board meetings to come through the time where our board is adopted, where adopted by our board later in May or June. We will also continue to share budget information at district advisory committees and other convenings. Another core value that's on the screen that I call your attention to is engagement. We believe that context matters and that those closest to the work with the deepest understanding must have input in the decisions to leverage resources and meet our students' needs. With both of these values in mind, transparency and engagement, I encourage our community to stay engaged and involved, not just during public comments, but throughout. I encourage you to accept and listen out for invitations, like the one I'm going to make to you shortly, to listen to board presentations, but also to attend different settings and convenings where the budget is discussed, like our Sback. This evening, actually, there will be a budget presentation, a pretty important budget presentation, that highlights our second interim budget. It talks about our expenses and our revenues and gives you some indication as to why we are up against the reductions that we've been discussing over the last couple of weeks. I also invite you to watch or attend virtually the upcoming Sback meeting, which will be held on Wednesday, March 26 at 3:00 PM. That's not correct. At 4:00 PM, I apologize. Again, this is a virtual meeting, so you can listen in from home, and you can find more information about this Sback. I want to be clear that that group does not make any decisions regarding districts' budget, but they do make recommendations. They are a critical piece in bringing, that committee is a critical committee, sorry, where we bring in different voices, including representatives from our various labor partners as well as community members and district staff and different family and parent representatives from our different advisory committees. We were trying to get some students. We would love to get some students. I might have to tag personally some students because that is the voice that is missing from those. Okay, I see one. I think you've been ballintowed by the person sitting next to you, but we are looking for student representatives as well because that is a place where various perspectives and voices come together to engage in the very conversation that you all are asking for, to understand, to get input, and to consider a number of ideas to get us towards that very important budget target. I appreciate the engagement that we witnessed. Many of you came out and supported our programs, people, and positions. The idea of these notices came out a lot this afternoon or this evening. These notices communicate to staff that their positions may need to be eliminated, but they also represent positions that might be reduced or reassigned. A good majority of these notices are for positions to be reassigned to different locations in different school sites. That said, there's no vote tonight. And I know that some of those comments were not about votes, but I think there are some folks who thought that the board would be taking some action. And so I want to be clear, there's no vote tonight on any positions. In fact, there's been no decisions made on any positions or nor on any of our budget reduction strategies. We had to send out those notices to comply with California law, even though we're still trying to understand and figure out our budget. We have said and we have tried to show that we are really trying to exhaust, next slide, all options before we even consider reducing positions and programs. If you look at this screen here, you'll see the budget reduction strategies that BUSD goes through. They're not in any specific order, but I want to call your attention to the first strategy, which is evaluate and remove vacant positions. That is most often the first thing that every district does when having to consider reductions to their budget. But I also want to point your attention to the last one, is consolidate and reduce programs or positions. That is the very last thing that we want to, it is the very last thing that we will do, and it's only going to happen after we've exhausted all of those rectangles in between, including looking at and evaluating our contracts and various partnerships internally as well as externally. So again, I encourage you to come to those S-Back meetings because you will hear the committee engaging in rich discussion around these various reduction strategies, but I also want you to know, even if you don't come, that we will exhaust every possible option before reducing or eliminating positions or programs. I do have to also say, and they're not in the room, but I love to pick up great insight, I look forward to continued partnership and collaboration with all of our labor partners to ensure, where's Ms. Mildred at? Accountability, accessibility, answers, and action. I wrote that down. And to you, Alex, I too believe that together we can. In terms of curriculum, BUSD values transparency and engagement, not just when thinking about resource allocation, but also thinking about teaching and learning. And so over the last years, we have had a number of engagements with family, staff, and our elementary literacy adoption committee to think about the curriculum that our babies receive in language arts. Our staff have piloted curriculum over the past several months, engaging two pilot cycles. Tonight, if you stay, I sure hope that you stay, you will hear staff's recommendation for the K-5 reading curriculum adoption. That's a big deal, y'all, and you heard some of our babies speak about it, and you also heard some educators speak about it as well. There have been a number of people who have been a part of this process, school staff, including members of the pilot committee who were here tonight, some of them are still here tonight, our school leaders, who are, some of them still here tonight, and district staff, families and leaders as well who participated in these sessions to get us to the place that we are this evening. I appreciate all the learning, leading, and engagement that have brought us to this point in the process, and again, I hope that you will stay to hear staff's recommendation on our curriculum. Finally, we have an important resolution on the agenda that I want to call your attention to, and that's item 12.6 on consent. It is the approval of Resolution 25-036 in support of transgender students. These have not been easy times for many in our community, and this includes our LGBTQ+ students, staff, and families. This resolution is important. It reflects our ongoing commitment to inclusivity and to celebrating our beautiful diversity. Recognizing that in 2018, the Progress flag was designed to integrate the original Rainbow Pride flag of 1978 and the trans flag of 1999, expanding acknowledgement of LGBTQ+ identities, including identities of, keep up with me, y'all with me? Light blue, pink, and white, represented transgender and non-binary identities. Thank you. You want to do it, Vanna? That's light blue, pink, and white to represent transgender and non-binary identities, brown and black to represent queer people of color identities, black to represent those living with and lost to HIV and AIDS. And also recognizing that International Transgender Day of Visibility is an annual event occurring every March 31st since 292009, dedicated to celebrating transgender people and raising awareness of discrimination faced by transgender people worldwide, as well as the celebration of their contributions to society. This resolution that's on tonight's agenda resolves that the Berkeley Unified School District Board of Education and Berkeley Unified School District shall, in recognition of Transgender Day of Visibility on March 31st, 2025, install the Progress Pride Flag representing and celebrating LGBTQ+ identities in the board meeting room, where it shall remain on display for all public meetings. This resolution and flag that now hangs on this wall is a reiteration and a recommitment from all of us in Berkeley Unified to represent and celebrate LGBTQ+ identities. Clap, y'all. Okay, I lied, that wasn't the last thing. Last thing is, I really, I totally been inviting you to lots of stuff tonight. Last invitation, I invite you to our BUSD Seventh Annual Black History Oratorical Fest, which will be on Wednesday, March 26, right over here at the Oxford Theater, starting at 5:30 PM. This year's theme is the Harlem Renaissance. It's an essential period in American history, and the era witnessed a convergence of artistic expression, and you're going to be able to witness our babies and all of their magic and magnificent and their artistic expression as well. So that's the end of my comments this evening, President. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you. We will move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve this evening's consent calendar?
I move to approve this consent calendar.
I second. Moved by Director Corn, seconded by Director Shunaski. Can you please call the roll?
Student Director Garcia?
Here. Director? Student, excuse me, Ms. Charis. Student Director Garcia, your response is yes to approve the calendar. Sorry, yes. Recorded. Director Basavib?
Yes.
Director Shunaski?
Yes.
Director Corn?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes. Thank you so much. The motion passes and the consent calendar is approved. We will now move on to our agenda items for this evening. We only have about an hour left for our meeting tonight with a possible extension of 30 minutes, but we can only extend our meeting time once. And so what we will need to do is we will need to actually table one of our items to another meeting, and so I'm going to entertain a motion to table item 13.1, which is the Midyear Local Control and Accountability Plan Update, to the next meeting. Is there a motion?
I move to table item 13.1 until the next meeting.
Moved by Director Shunaski. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Corn. All those in favor will signify by aye when Ms. Charis calls your name.
Director Basavib?
Aye.
Director Garcia?
Aye.
Director Shunaski?
Yes.
Director Corn?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes. Thank you so much. Are there any nays, abstentions? Okay, we will move this item to our next meeting. Deepest apologies to staff who stayed to present, and we look forward to seeing you at the next meeting. At this time, we will move to item 13.2, the curriculum adoption, which is the recommendation for our Elementary English Language Arts program. So we will receive Associate Superintendent Jill Hogendike at this time.
Good evening, members, superintendent, members of the board. Turned it off. Excited to be joined here by our literacy coordinator, Rose James, and we're joined in spirit by Director Chris Albeck and TSA Erica Carter, who could not be here with us this evening. I was going to say, next slide. We want to make sure that we ground this presentation in our district's mission, which is on the next slide. We know that the work that we do, particularly around literacy, really is a lever to enable and inspire our diverse student body to achieve academic excellence and make positive contributions to the world. Tonight, we are here to share with the BU and the BUSD community our curriculum adoption recommendation for the Elementary English Language Arts, and we are going to share the rationale and implications for implementation. And as you heard from some of our public speakers this evening, that is the next layer of work. We have always said that the work of curriculum, the work of literacy is not just about curriculum, and there have been a number of components that have been involved in this work, not the least of which is the alignment across our LCAP and our district strategic plan. We know that to provide high-quality instruction and academic interventions, we need a number of things in place, inclusive of curriculum. Director Albeck has presented a number of times on our BUSD curriculum adoption process, and here we are at the bottom of this list at the decide stage of this work. Our work on our literacy adoption is grounded in our framework, our BUSD literacy framework. This framework was adopted by our pilot committee and has been shared with various stakeholder groups for input and feedback. What you see here is the vision statement and the four priority areas that are named in the framework. As we will share in this presentation, this framework has been our North Star and our roadmap in defining what we needed as a BUSD community and a new curriculum, but it will also continue to serve as a decision-making compass for us around our continued work strengthening and vertically aligning our literacy system. The literacy system, and it's been a minute since we've seen this before, really hones in on three important components. The infrastructure, which involves our collaboration through professional learning and valid and reliable assessments. You heard mention of this this evening in public comment, that we have invested a lot in the professional development of our staff, not just in district leaders or our site-based specialists, but our classroom teachers. We had started with a book study two years ago, and last year invested in the Core Reading Academy to ground all of our practitioners in the components that are necessary to teach students how to read. This also involves capacity building, which is the ongoing coaching and support, and then finally instructional resources that are not just about the time that are allocated to instruction, but the curriculum that's aligned to the science of reading. We've been before you a number of times, taking you along this journey, and so there have been four public presentations over the course of the last year and a half. Those are just featured for you here as a reminder that we have an ongoing commitment to this complex systems change, and we want to make sure that we are doing the work to keep the community informed and abreast of the changes that we are making and that we have been implementing cycles of continuous improvement around literacy. We are building a system that really is grounded in transparency and trust and centering the needs of our students so that we can sustain this work over time. We have had a number of touchpoints with the community before as we have been progressing through this work, and you see flyers just as a reminder that we have engaged with our educational partners to really enlist their unique perspectives, particularly for our focal student groups. We held affinity spaces for input, and then since February of last year, so a year and a month, we've held eight community listening sessions to calibrate with our families and communities and share the progress of this process, as well as getting their input and feedback as we have made adjustments to this work. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rose James, who's going to share with you the work that have led us to this evening in making a curriculum recommendation.
Good evening, board directors. Rose James, literacy coordinator. I'm honored to be with you this evening to present this body of work completed by our Language Arts Committee and culminating in the recommendation you will hear tonight. I also want to acknowledge the leadership of Director Chris Albeck, who's been leading this adoption process with me, with a lot of integrity and care, as well as Erica Carter, who unfortunately has had to be out on medical leave, but I just want to call out her work and how critical it was to the success of this pilot process. The successful completion of this pilot process has really been thanks to the hard work of our pilot committee members, some of whom were in the audience tonight and spoke in comment. Our committee of dedicated professionals, 85% of which were classroom teachers, with the other 15% being specialists and literacy coaches, really committed fully to this process. Learning and then teaching to full curricula in one year is a huge amount of work, in addition to having to be away from their classrooms for our committee days and training days and leaving subplans. They engaged in this process with so much commitment and intention and perseverance in many cases and took this with the seriousness and gravity that it deserves. And so I just want to give them a moment of gratitude. I know there's not many people in the room, but just a round of applause for our committee. I hope they're watching. They can watch later. Starting last April, when we convened our committee, we began by investing in curriculum selections from the CARRY Center out of the University of Minnesota. This review provided us with a deep dive into the culturally available curricula and their alignment with the reading research. We then set out to identify and distill what our priorities would be, our local priorities as a district committee and team in narrowing down and the piloting process, out of which came our literacy framework and our look-for's. Finally, building on the work of the CARRY review, we used our framework as a lens as we explored six options, which you see here on your left, and narrowed them down to the two cycles you see on your right. And it was really based on stakeholder feedback from our first two listening sessions, as well as pilot committee members. We ultimately decided to conduct fewer cycles. Our committee agreed that two cycles would provide a deeper understanding and the opportunity to teach more than one unit or module. Based on the review committee, we decided to pilot EL education, which is a comprehensive curriculum, so includes all the components of learning to read and writing. And then we piloted a pairing of a knowledge-building curriculum called Fish Tank ELA, which is designed to be taught in partnership with a foundational skills program, and for that purpose, we selected functional phonics and morphology, which is actually K-5, because it teaches students to read in K-2, and then in third through fifth grade, they engage in a deep study of morphology. Over the course of, thank you, over the course of this year, the team has led a robust collaborative process, which included interfacing with over 134 community members throughout the last year and the eight district-wide community listening and learning events, training, prepping, teaching, and learning with the work of our incredible pilot committee and their 414 students in grade K-5, who now, as of Monday, have engaged in almost 29 weeks of pilot curriculum instruction across two cycles. So multiple units and modules later, we are thrilled to recommend the selection of Fish Tank ELA paired with functional phonics and morphology. The pilot committee identified four key strengths of this program pairing that really stand out for recommendation, and those strengths I'm going to speak to in some detail on the following slides, but they are strengths in implementation, strengths in building knowledge and rigor, cultural relevance and joy in learning, and access opportunities for all So our committee found that both of these programs offered a high level of challenge and rigor for our students. We know that students in BUSD classrooms come to us with beautifully diverse funds of knowledge, and we know that part of our equity imperative is that we prepare all of our students for deep content area learning in the secondary grades, and we do that by systematically building that knowledge and vocabulary from their earliest school experience. from their earliest school experiences. In Fish Tank, students engage in diverse text sets on particular topics and then use reading and writing as vehicles to deepen their knowledge and in turn build their skills as readers and writers. One student spoke to how meaningful the knowledge-building and word study was to her when she said, "I loved that Fish Tank actually believed that we, as fifth graders, were mature enough to handle topics like war. And also, the word work is really helpful and actually it works to improve your vocabulary and ability to spell." So you'll see throughout these slides, I will refer to some of our teacher, student, and community inputs that we highlighted. And we'll speak to the strengths in this selection, but just know that this is just some of the qualitative data that we collected. And we want to just highlight some of those voices that informed this recommendation. So Fish Tank and Functional also stood out to our committee in the way that these programs complemented one another in their strengths and in the way that the materials organization and lesson design felt very intuitive for our teachers. Both curricula are not short on resources for scaffolding for all learners toward grade level, but they also follow a predictable structure and routines that make it easy for teachers to teach and students to learn. For example, every reading lesson in Fish Tank follows a predictable sequence of building background knowledge, engaging with the text for understanding through key questions, and then a section called Building Deeper Meaning, where students engage in academic discussion or writing in a target task. So this predictability and structure and clarity in lesson design really showed up in the strengths. This was also a theme that emerged from our community. And you can see here on the right, some handwritten feedback from a member of our community that says it needs to work with our teacher prep time in order to implement with fidelity. And that clarity and efficiency was very, came out very strongly in the review process. Fish Tank also stood out to our committee immediately last year in its selection of diverse, relevant texts and perspectives, as well as the social justice themes of many of their units. In the qualitative data collected from students, which was both classroom observation and survey, we saw high levels of engagement across classrooms with texts with one another and with their world. Their engagement with these materials is on display tonight as you saw them come up and speak to the relevance and their interest in learning about the world and learning how language works. In the words of one third-grade student who completed a unit on identity, "I loved reading about Diamond Daniel and Maria Isabel and can connect to how I wish I could jump into a book." The final area of strength that I want to share in our recommendation tonight is around access. This curriculum pairing is characterized by ease of use, not just for teachers, but for interventionists and education specialists, who will have very easy access to all lessons at all grade levels, easily modified and scaffolded or extended to a student's point of need. Part of the beauty of the high marks for usability with these curricula is that instead of spending their time planning to understand the point of the lesson, our pilot teachers found that they, it allowed them to get deeper faster and use their expertise in knowing their students to enhance the lesson to fit those needs in front of them without sacrificing rigor or access to higher-order thinking. I just want to mention Functional Phonics and Morphology also align really well with our structured literacy interventions because they are built on the same research. And in addition, they themselves can be used as interventions for students who need additional exposure or have unfinished learning from a previous grade. And finally, we know that handing teachers a program is not enough. And along with this recommendation, we also want to share a three-year plan and commitment of support for our educators. We know that the initial training will just be a launch and the most important training will be the ongoing, job-embedded professional learning that will be provided in the first years of implementation and beyond. Year one, we are calling a learn stage. We know that it will be new to all, including our literacy coaches and site leaders. So we will need to make sure that we are really working to understand and teach all the components, as well as making time to do unit unpacking and backwards planning. In year two, our deepen stage, we're moving from with fidelity to integrity and really focusing on evidence of learning, cycles of impact, and beginning to refine. And then finally, moving to the no stage, where we really start to think about sustainability over time, continuing to refine, innovate, and evaluate our impact through continuous cycles of improvement. And with that, I will pass it off to Associate Superintendent Hoganite to discuss the fiscal impact.
All right. So we always knew that this was going to be a significant investment. We've made a significant investment in our teachers and school leaders through the Core Reading Training last year. But the pairing of Fish Tank and Functional Phonics and Morphology is a total implementation year-one cost of about $1.1 million. We tried to break down on this slide. What you can see is that first year of implementation, which would be inclusive of training days, pre-service training, or training days during the summer, which was really called out by our school leaders and by our teachers, like wanting to make sure that we had committed days to get into the materials and to plan and prep thoughtfully for the coming year. We also know that we have professional development days in the course of the school year and maximizing our use of the Early Release Wednesdays to do that ongoing work. We have identified some potential funding sources through the spend-down on some grant funds that we have and some fund balance with VSIP. So we are anticipating that we are going to be able, we are anticipating, we got to, I'm going to double-check my numbers with my friend Pauline Follenspie over there to the left. But we feel like we are confident in being able to cover that initial cost, as well as the ongoing cost. These materials are open source, but we would have an ongoing cost to pay for the licensing over the course of the adoption. So in terms of next steps, this is, we're making a public recommendation, but there is not actually a vote tonight. But just to make it official and clear, we are recommending that we adopt Functional Phonics and Morphology paired with Fish Tank for our Elementary English Language Arts curriculum beginning in the next school year. The curriculum materials will be available for public view here at 2020 Bonnar. Folks can check in with the reception downstairs, and they'll direct you appropriately. And there are links online to those curriculum materials. And we'll have those up through April 4th, along with a survey if people want to give us feedback after looking at those materials. We will agendize the recommendation for action at our next board meeting. And then we are already in the stages of planning for that initial curriculum launch through professional development days. Have the link to our website there. And with that, we'll take questions.
Thank you so much for your presentation this evening. There were a lot of comments tonight and a lot of also head nods in the audience in agreeance with the recommendation that you all are presenting to us tonight and that we, as a Board of Education, will vote on during our next meeting. And so thank you for the thorough presentation. And thank you to our students, as well as our community members who came out tonight to speak in support. I will, at this time, entertain questions from the Board of Education. We do have 2 minutes and 24 seconds for questions. And so we could move those quickly. Director Vasudev, do you have any questions online?
Yes. Just really quickly, I know you talked about the cadence for professional development and the implementation phase. It seems like the summer and then a couple of Wednesdays. But just wanted to know if you could be a little bit more specific about that. And then for the survey that you alluded to, to get broader feedback, just wanted to make sure that was going to be available in a multilingual way and wondering how you were going to outreach to our English language learners. Thanks.
Yeah. So we, yes, we are, we've identified initial training, so launch training. And then as for the ongoing training for next year, we're looking into a few different options. One thing that we know has been really effective in the past, as in like with Core and other professional development, when we're able to bring our educators together cross-site, grade alike. So we're looking for some different opportunities to do that, but we haven't identified yet what those are going to be.
And then just to the, so the materials are available online. We want people to have an opportunity, should they choose to do so, to look at that. And in person, we have those set up here at 2020 Bonnar. We'll be able to take feedback in both languages. It is important to note that this is one of two curriculum adoption recommendations that we're going to be making because we have been working with the Silvia Mendez community specifically. And there will be a different curriculum that we will be, that the pilot team at Silvia Mendez will be recommending for the primary grades at Silvia Mendez. So those are the materials that will be available in Spanish.
Director Korn?
That was going to be my question. You beat me to it.
Wonderful.
Thanks.
Director Shanaskey?
I just want to thank you and I want to thank all those students and educators. It's been a long road. And so it feels really good to see this come to fruition. So thank you and thank both of you for spearheading it.
Can I just piggyback on that to say that the public comment from the students tonight about literacy curriculum was one of the most beautiful public comments I've seen in many years of attending board meetings. It was really exciting to hear kids talking like that about their learning.
Thank you.
I just wanted to, just to piggyback on that. And I think the curriculum discussion as the committee was voting on the pilot was probably one of the most thoughtful input sessions I've experienced in my career. And just the deep connection that our teachers and leaders have been making to that content and the impact that they were seeing with their students was really beautiful to see.
Thank you for that last tidbit. And thank you for you all's presentation this evening. We will now move on to our action items. The first action item is 14.1, which is the approval to certify Berkeley Unified School District's second interim report ending January 31, 2025. We have listed for this presentation 45 minutes, but I'm hoping that we will actually only use 30 minutes for this presentation, including time for questions. And so I will welcome Assistant Superintendent Pauline Follenspie. Thank you. You'll turn, press the button to turn the microphone on. Ms. Chavez, can you?
This one does.
Put these to our screen.
The both one?
Okay.
Oh. Both of them, okay. Hello. So good evening, everyone. We'll be presenting the second interim, as President Brown mentioned. And tonight, I'm presenting with Executive Director Emily Mayer, who will be doing a lot of the presentation tonight. But we just want to make sure that when we're looking, does this sing well? Emily, you know how to do it. Oh, yeah. So we just want to share with you the fiscal outlook or the fiscal presentation of where the district is at the second interim. And again, as all our presentations are grounded in our mission to enable and inspire diverse student body to achieve academic excellence and to make positive contributions to the world. So the agenda, we're going to be looking at the general fund. And we're going to be pointing out how the unrestricted general fund actually rolls up into the combined general fund. We're going to be looking at the budget cycle. Then we're going to do a brief budget recap, summary and highlights. We have a little section on special education that we'll share with you. The variance report, ADA and enrollment, and the multi-year projections. So that's the agenda that we'll be covering in the 20, 30 minutes we have. Okay. Next slide. So this is a really, this is a probably difficult-to-see slide, but what's important on this slide, the takeaway, is that the focus of our presentation is the first column only. And that's the unrestricted general fund. You can see we also have a restricted general fund. We have, we have the maintenance tax, unrestricted and restricted, as well as VSIP and BARA. So what most people see when they look at our SACS forms is the last three columns, unrestricted and restricted. But want to remind everyone that our focus is on the unrestricted general fund, which is the first column of numbers. The next slide. Okay. So this is a brief recap of the budget cycle. We're currently presenting the second interim. That's the March deadline. We also have to look forward to the May revise, as well as the governor's final budget. And these will be situations that will inform us developing the '25, '26 budget, which we're already, is underway already. So. And for unrestricted general fund, the highlights, we are having a positive certification, which means that we are balanced and we're able to meet our reserves for the current year and the subsequent two years. And it is contingent, however, on adopting budget balancing solutions in '26 and '27, which will be, it's all, what we're also presenting is a resolution tonight that the board has to approve. And these budget balancing solutions are included in the multi-year. So we had an early start in developing our budget. We can, we're working with our superintendent's Budget Advisory Committee. And we're continuing to update proposals and to explore budget balancing solutions with the committee. And the second interim does look at the changes since the first interim, which is the variance report, which will be covered by Emily. Next slide. So again, we mentioned it's an unrestricted general fund focus. I'm trying to stress that because there can be confusion in terms of looking at Form 1 versus unrestricted general fund. And as President Brown mentions, this covering the period through January 31st, but it is projecting the activity for the rest of the fiscal year. And the assumptions that are baked into the multi-year projections is based on the governor's January proposed budget. This is just an overview. We've been talking about stormy weather ahead. This is Alameda's slide. They are just, they're saying that most districts are experiencing declining enrollment. Berkeley is experiencing a slight uptick in enrollment since the pandemic, but there has been a decline from before the pandemic. Of course, all districts are now realizing that our pandemic funding is gone and we are facing increasing costs with not, with revenue not keeping at the same pace as the increasing costs, which is causing districts to deficit fund, deficit spend. And that's, I don't know, we can go to the next one. And this is just a note on our special education. So what I have here is our, the special educations, their, what is that like, their motto? Or their, they're actually, their whole methodology is to provide services to individuals with exceptional needs and sustain the community where each child, respecting their exception, exception, okay, are welcomed. So our special education, first and foremost, they're there to make sure our children are educated. And our challenge that we're seeing is making sure that this program is able to provide the service with a fiscal lens. So we want to serve all our students. We want to make sure all needs are met. And at the same time, we have to make sure we're fiscally responsible because we've seen an increase in costs over the, over, since 2018, the costs have gone up about 49%. But the message that needs to be communicated clearly is that a lot of that increase is due to negotiated salary increases that we've had over that period. So next slide. Now it's over to Emily for the variance.
Thank you. So the variance report is looking at the differences since the last time we presented a budget update, which is our first interim report. So we presented on the first interim earlier this winter, and that was covering the period through October 31st. And now the second interim is taking into account additional changes and information that we know as of January 31st. And so this first slide here is looking at our updated revenue projections compared to the first interim. And you'll see that the major change there is a decrease of about $100,000. And that's due to due to a decrease in projected local control funding formula revenue. And that's driven by our funded average daily attendance rate. And so based on our CalPads data, which is a snapshot day that we take in October, that's sort of the official day that the funding is based on, that ended up being about nine students fewer than what we'd initially been projecting at the first interim, which is why we have that decrease there. On the next slide here, we're looking at our expenditures comparing unrestricted general fund first interim to second interim. You'll see that overall our expenditures compared to the first interim are going up about $1.7 million. That's primarily driven by the fact that since October 31st, we've settled with three of our bargaining units, so Berkeley Federation of Teachers, BCC E and Local 21. We'd known that the BFT negotiation was in the process of being settled at the time of first interim, and so we designated that in the fund balance. So you'll see that later in the slides as well. But so we've now, that we've completely settled and approved those raises, we've put them into the budget. Slightly offsetting this is a decrease in our services and operating expenses, and that's due primarily to one-time savings from unspent budget balances. One of the main things that we do as part of our second interim reviews, we look at where is our spending exceeding projections, where is it less than projected? And we, we start to make those true ups so that we're projecting as close to actual when we close the books at the end of the year. And then finally, one last item is that our indirect costs did increase slightly and that's due primarily to budgeting grants in our restricted programs, including the 1% bonus to BCC E, Local 21 and BFT, which was funded on our parcel tax. Now, looking at the deficiency of revenues over expenditures. So you can see here that we are deficit spending, we're spending at a faster rate than what we're bringing in. The variance has decreased slightly since the first interim, but that's partially due to a contribution from Fund 20. So that's our reserve for post-employment benefits. And so we've increased that contribution from that sort of reserve account by an additional $800,000, which means that we were already dipping into this. We replenish it based on what we're spending on positions, but we're at this point depleting it faster than we're replenishing it. At first interim, we'd counted on about $3.8 million. We now increase that by about $800,000 to about $4.6 million. And that's driven in part by covering costs for our labor agreements, which we partially planned on.
It's board approved?
Yes, and was board approved. And then also due to increased costs for special education. In this case, increases in our NPS costs, our non-public school costs and non-public agency costs. Looking at our contributions in, you can see that these, the first sort of paragraph is areas where we have contributions in our parcel taxes are our main drivers of that and those are mostly constant. We did adjust the arts, music and instructional materials block grant contribution. It had been initially marked as one time at first interim, so it wasn't showing up in the first interim column. So we've addressed that for second interim. So you can see that $800,000 contribution there. But you'll also see that our contributions out, so our contributions from our unrestricted general fund to our other programs have gone up for our special education program by about $1.385 million. And so that's offset by this block grant contribution as well as by the additional contributions from our Fund 20 reserve. But this is primarily due to costs for our non-public agency contracts as well as the costs of our raises that are being covered by the contribution. That goes up when our salary costs go up overall as well. So that's another part of the driver there. And so then, looking here at the overall bottom line, you can see that our net decrease in our fund balance, we were projecting at first interim to be drawing into the fund balance about $42,000. We're now projecting a decrease of the fund balance of about $1.6 million. And that's in addition to those contributions from Fund 20. What this means is that our, our ending fund balance is, at first interim was about $3.57 million, is now about $1.967 million. We can commit and assign portions of that, including for our required 3% reserve. You can see that that committed and assigned amount has gone down and that's primarily because of the BFT contract negotiation, which had been designated in the fund balance and we've now moved it into the budget. But you can see that at the end of the day, our, our ending undesignated fund balance in the unrestricted general fund has decreased by about $100,000. And so we're looking at an undesignated fund balance of about $786,000. And you can see here, this is just the summary of the designations of those ending fund balances. So the $1.5 million designated for the BFT raise is now removed from second interim and put up into the budget, but otherwise our designations are pretty similar to what we'd had at first interim. So that's the variance, so the major changes compared to first interim. This slide here is looking at our average daily attendance trend. And so this is summarizing, going back all the way to 2021, how our attendance has tracked over time. So we are projecting our enrollment to be about 900, sorry, 9,162 students and we're holding that projection constant going into the subsequent years. Our average daily attendance rate, we are, again, holding constant compared to our previous projections, so about 94.8% in the current year and in the out years. And so that gives us a funded average daily attendance rate of about 8,686 students. You'll see if you go back into prior years that our funded and our projected average daily attendance rates were different. That's because we'd been benefiting from a rolling average that factored in our pre-COVID higher attendance rates. We're now more than three years out from the pandemic and so we're no longer benefiting from that rolling average. So our funded average daily attendance and our projected average daily attendance are the same. And now I'll turn it back over to Assistant Superintendent Follensbee for the multi-year projections.
Thanks, Emily. So, so now we're looking at our multi-year projections and every, every interim that we present, we present the current year and two subsequent years. So 25, 26 is actually the year that we're working on now to, working with the various partners to construct the 25, 26 budget. So we're actually sort of in two years, actually in 24, 25, but projecting and building 25, 26. So the COLA, you can see the COLA for 24, 25 is at 1.07. For 25, 26, that number was higher, but based on the governor's budget, we're revising it downwards to 2.43, which actually reduced our revenue by about $500,000. We kept everything flat at second interim, even though when we're looking at 25, 26, projections are showing that the numbers will be going up in terms of attendance, especially at our pre-K level, but we'll be using that to actually construct the budget and actually count that towards a budget balancing solution. In terms of our revenue, our base revenue, as I mentioned, in 25, 26, that number went down by about $500,000. Most other numbers are remaining constant from this year to 25, 26 and 26, 27. So we're looking at total revenue in the unrestricted general fund, $117,119.9 and $123.7. And those increases are driven by the, the 2.43 COLA predominantly, as well as a 3.52. Next slide. So the next slide looks at our expenses and that's where we, we can see what we've been talking about, our budget balancing solution on this slide. It's shown as a target. So it's $7.6 million and an additional $200,000 in '26, '27. And again, that's what we're going to be asking the board to vote on in the resolution after this presentation. So with, with the budget balancing solutions, we actually have a positive, the blue line, the change in fund balance. We're not deficit spending. It's showing that we actually have a surplus of $100,000 and 1.7 million. And we have an undesignated ending fund balance of .9, 1.2 and 3 million dollars. So while we actually have a positive number, it's a very tight budget. We don't have a lot of extras and this is after making our budget reductions. So it's imperative that we all have a fiscal lens when we're making decisions because it has far-reaching impacts to our bottom line and our ability to keep, to be positive, to certify as a positive and not, not have a negative certification. So the MIP does, as I mentioned, it does show that we have to make budget reductions and a caution without these reductions, we'll have a negative or qualified opinion, reminding we need, reminding us that we need to have the resolution formally approved. And more, most importantly, the out years do not include negotiated labor, negotiations with our labor unions, as was mentioned in tonight. So, so we will be working with SAM and, and the labor unions to move forward with that. So next steps, the board will continue to receive regular updates and we will continue to work with our advisory committees and our, and our labor partners and various other committees to construct the 25, 26 budget. Special education, it's critical that we continue to work closely with special education to align fiscal and program because we have seen that the costs are increasing and whereas we know what the drivers are, it's critical that we have a fiscal lens when we're looking at that program. And of course, we did, we see we're going to continue to work with our other partners, the city of Berkeley. And of course, we rely on advice from Alameda County Office of Ed and we continue to work closely with them. So that's the end of our presentations. If you have any questions, we'll take them.
Thank you very much. We will begin with you, Director Vasudev. Do you have any questions regarding the budget presentation?
No, no questions, just thanking the staff for putting this together. It is really hard to look at those numbers. Just wanted to thank you all and I look forward to continuing the budget discussions this spring.
Okay. We will move to Director Shanaskey. Do you have questions?
I just have a couple comments and a question. So, you know, I've been talking about attendance a lot lately and I just want to point out those ADA numbers again, you know, under 95% means that we have room to grow and every 1% in attendance is a million dollars of revenue for our district. So I think that's a really important area for us to grow in. And then we also know not just the bottom line, but that students that come to school have better outcomes in school. So big there. I also want to highlight the sped budget and the over-reliance on contractors within that sped budget and that that's another huge area in which we can have cost savings so that we don't have to make some of the painful decisions that we've been talking about today. And finally, I would just like to put out a request for the superintendent and board president that we do a sort of deep dive budget workshop because these numbers are all, you know, wonderful and I appreciate both of you and your teams. There's a lot of information sort of buried within, within that and our budget really is a statement of our values and it's the information that's buried within all those lines that helps us really live those values and be true to them. Thanks.
Thank you. Can I ask a clarifying question? We will approve the resolution for the budget adjustments tonight, if that is the pleasure of the board, but you would like to have a budget presentation or budget workshop for the board outside of this evening's approval, if that's the will?
Yes, sort of a deep dive into the budget as a body.
Wonderful.
Thanks.
Director Corn?
I don't have any additional questions, just thank you for the work and the really thorough explanation. I appreciate it.
I thank you all for your presentation. Normally, you know, I have a billion and one questions, which should, so tonight is very surprising, but we will actually keep you all here for item 14.2 that we need to move on to. Okay.
Oh, so you want me to present it? So we're going to do two separate votes.
We do, we do need to do two separate votes. And so why don't we actually just go ahead and approve the second interim first and then we'll move on to item 14.2. So is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the second interim report.
Moved by Director Shanaskey. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Director Corn. Can you please call the roll?
Director Vasudev?
Yes.
Director Shanaskey?
Yes.
Director Corn?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes. Okay, we will now move on to item 14.2.
So 14.2 is a resolution that supports the request for the board to approve 7.6, $7.6 million and $7.8 million in budget balancing solutions, not actual solutions, but just that you're aware that there is a need for us to interinput these reductions for us to have a balanced budget. And we have a timeline attached on the appendix to the resolution and we're asking the board to approve that tonight as well.
Before we call for the motion to approve, are there any questions from the board? Director Vasudev, do you have any questions? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I move to approve the resolution.
Moved by Director Shanaskey. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Director Corn. Can you please call the roll?
Director Vasudev?
Yes.
Director Shanaskey?
Yes.
Director Corn?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes. Thank you. The motion passes. Thank you both for your work. Have a great evening. God bless you. There are a number of information items, including some board policies as well as administrative regulations. And so I'd like to thank my counterpart, Vice President Chang, as well as Yasmina for the work on these items. And so please, board govern yourselves accordingly as we will see these again on the consent calendar. We will now move on to extended public comment. Is there anyone here for extended public comment? Okay, you will have one minute. And once you begin speaking, we will close the public comment period. So if there's anyone else who'd like to speak, please identify yourself at this time. Good evening. Seeing none, you may begin, Sully.
Good evening, board, excuse me. Good evening, board members. I'm, for those who don't know, I'm Sully Alpert. I'm the new BCC appointee on the Personnel Commission. We just had the pleasure of attending the conference of the state's personnel commissions, which included both our staff, our commissioners and some union representatives. And one of the really interesting presentations that I, what didn't hear, but some of our union colleagues heard was from a district in the South, Southern California. The name is escaping me, but they had some really interesting information about ways that their personnel commission and union work together really collaboratively and also methods for hiring, improving hiring for special ed instructors and special ed techs. And we know that's one of the positions that's been really hard for us to fill. So I'm looking forward to hearing more from them and hopefully bringing some lessons that we can take to hiring here. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Sully, and thank you for staying all the way to the end of our board meeting. Are there any other, we'll move to the second opportunity for extended board member comments. Are there any comments from board members? No, hearing none. Our meeting is adjourned at 10:51 PM. See you all.